Is that what you wanted?
And then so.
Should, you're sharing the whole screen now, so you should still bring everyone up. That's what I was thinking. Yes. It shows up as like presenter mode and you have to mirror it within here. Okay, let me escape out of this for a minute. Actually, let me make sure.
Is that good or not?
Yeah, it's not.
Okay, it's anyway. Okay.
Okay, really, I. All right, no one touching. No touching, especially.
Stop touching the top.
Give me that. You got your goals correct.
And we go that way. Thank you. I need to thank you.
Is that good enough?
Um, yeah. Do you know if it'll seem?
That's great. Do you want me to pull up the reservation?
Uh, this should be at the one, don't check.
That's all right.
Never mind.
I'll do it. No problem.
We have a lot of those in that way. They're gonna say we have the word.
Yep, we have two reasons. You're gonna do the. What works on the patch.
Say the one.
So do you want the one or the other?
Okay, so that's a no-go.
Sure, that was a chance to. I mean, I would have cut that part out of the magazines, had it signed, it'd be like. It's not just about the kids, the adults, the people. The horses.
It's great, I like. All right. Yeah. Let's get ours in. Justin, thank you. It's so great to have it.
Hey, that worked. We do a last.
Uh, it's coming in pretty muffled, but I, I, I can hear you.
We got a lot of people talking.
Yeah.
Mix it, it'll be better. Okay, let me see.
It was good to be able to catch up to this.
Oh, yeah.
maneuver around, change a bit.
Absolutely.
Devin, this was an incredible packet of materials and it really conveys difficult decisions.
Absolutely.
For the team effort.
Sure. Individual channels that if you get them too high and below, it doesn't.
I mean, listen, it's just, you get a lot of noise whenever you hear. That's the master. And then each one of these is for four of the mics.
That's key.
You gotta keep it, yeah, you don't want it too high. Is that gonna?
Okay, okay. Nick, you got audio on your side?
Don't worry.
It's like, that's gonna make you a little bit interested about it.
No, I was.
You can kind of through.
Yeah, we have audio coming through, sorry.
All right, that's fine.
Cause I'm doing, I'm doing push to talk with my spacebar and I was off of the. I couldn't answer right away.
Did you have to give that one to me or? See, this is the part that can use this music, duplicate here, but then we also have.
And then that's. But it's.
There are not. I tend to like a wrap. On a single. Ever. Yes. But I know. You wanna try? And yeah. So. Yeah.
Good night.
The others.
The ones.
Appreciate, but how do you treat?
I went, not bill, I have a calorie.
I did last.
I wouldn't tell him, nobody in that state. Just.
Was it good?
Now, there's like.
I do like.
We begin it with that.
Yeah. You know what? I don't even.
We don't have. Eight more. Yeah, we're not.
Yeah, grandma. Your mom or his? Mine. Is that better or worse?
Uh, no.
Yes. Me and the. If you.
I was waiting for the chili, but.
So when you just, when you hover over, there's a, there's a pull down. There.
That's.
See, I was hoping you could share from here, which you can't, but I was just, it stays here unless you. Make it go away. This one. And then I think these guys should disappear. You know, stick around until like fifteen, twenty minutes in, make sure everything goes smooth. Yeah, that sounds perfect.
Sounds safe. So Tom. Kind of. Yeah. Yeah.
My gosh.
Yeah. In a.
It was on.
Which actually.
So if you're ever.
Are you? I don't know. So.
I'm.
I know, sometimes. I know. Sure. Yeah.
Um. So.
Oh, yes.
I'm gonna. Do this so you can. Better. Exactly. Yes.
Right now. Now if I need. That'll.
Or you want to. What?
Is that working now? Yep. There's a man.
Yeah. Yeah, no. That's. Yeah. I think that's like.
Yeah. By itself. I was.
I want to talk to you. I think. I don't know.
Are you from?
So I.
Okay. Right, comments.
Okay. That I. Yeah. No. We're going to.
Addiction. Good morning.
Really? Yes. And that. I would. Yeah.
Would you have please? Something for the.
I'm sorry. Yeah.
I just. Yeah, Scott.
Hi. Weird. Alright. That was really awkward the way I said that to you. Hello, Karen. I just pop. I think it's. I can read this.
You?
Are you sitting right here?
No.
Take your bag. That's why.
Alright.
I mean. Sorry. Hey. Is that like a subtle word? Black with a subtle like. Yeah.
What is? Okay.
Oh, yeah.
I think. I just need to. Charge.
Well, looking at what's in this right here. Oh, yeah. I'm adjusting right there. I believe I said. Totally. I'm. I was. That's hilarious.
That's hilarious.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sorry.
I was. Here we go.
I didn't.
Yeah.
Didn't do. Yeah.
We pride in the.
Pride in. I need to.
Yeah.
Stop.
I'll look.
Yeah. Hi, Patrick. How are you? Hi. How we doing on time? One. I'm gonna open up. Okay. Welcome, everyone. It's one o'clock. We're gonna get started. Um, before I do the roll call, I will ask, um, you can make certainly silence on phones. Yeah, appreciate that. On the. I'm Barb Nosferdi, the mayor, and this is day two of our city council retreat. And where we are really looking to set priorities and funding those priorities. Over to city manager Jose, to maybe do a bit of a recap and, and. Anything else you might want to add. So I'm gonna go this way, Barb Nosferdi. Jessica Bules, city council. Melissa Yusuf, city council. Cynthia Stee, finance director.
Jerry Day, assistant finance director.
Sarah Hill.
Works in recognition.
You got that.
Scott Shine, the.
Right. Oh, sorry, guys. Mayor.
Was it mayor? We'll say mayor.
Here, I guess.
Olivia Voschans, city councilor. Kim Baxter, during the city councilor.
Thank you. And, um, first of all, I just wanted to give a big thanks to the staff yesterday. How thorough you were in your presentations. And then also for this packet of materials that you provided to us yesterday with options A, B, and C. You gave us in many ways, the information. Sometimes a little disturbing as it may be, or is potentially great, but to make some choices. So I appreciate the thinking that went into it. And I also want to acknowledge the folks that aren't necessarily sitting at the table, but also help bring this together. And then we also have citizens, our residents in that audience as well. So Jose, won't you open us up?
Sure, absolutely. So yesterday, I think we had a really good retreat day. Um, we talked about some of the highest priorities of council seats and were able to get kind of a feel of the ranking in those priorities. It definitely doesn't mean that, uh, none of that, all of them aren't important. I think it just means of what do we need to be focusing on? Uh, and to what level that we need to focus on. So what we're gonna look at this day and today, and I'll kind of let you. Allow, we met a little bit this morning and have. We have, we modify the presentation a bit, so it'll flow a little bit more. As we were going into this presentation, she had. Day two set up, it really was based on a presentation that kind of included everything without knowing where the priorities were of the council. So there's some things that we, we kind of hidden slides electronic weight on here that may not be as much or more based on some of the priorities that we went through. But we can always pull them back up if there's questions that go with it. Uh, what I would like to kind of set the outcome for this is, you know, we're not getting into making decisions or kind of looking into the, the funding and coming up with like concrete decisions. This is how we're going to fund it. Really setting up the framework for staff to know what are the levels of funding we're seeing with these priorities? What are things that are okay for us to begin looking at and exploring? And maybe where are some things that council doesn't want us to explore or move through? So the goal would be really setting up a, a program of work for the staff to then come back to council throughout the year and begin formulating based on the retreat. And really getting equal down to that part of being able to make those decisions. So this really just kind of helps us make sure that we're getting to work on some guiding principles and some funding based on how the council has directed this to their group.
Great.
So with that, I will pass it over to Patrick.
And welcome, Patrick. We appreciate you being here in snowy Durango.
Yeah, yeah, thanks for all that. And for all that. And for all that snow. Yeah, so wonderful. Yes, I, I, my wife said it smelled like a lot and all at once. So we have delighted to be here. Today's the second day of the focus, what you're trying to do. And I think this analogy will help. And Jose, when I were talking about this, sometimes illustrations, analogies, frameworks kind of help people away immediately. So thinking of today is really you're designing the house. You're the architect. You're not the builder. That's really second from going from here. Where sometimes council drift into, they want to design and build all at the same time. You're gonna dip your toe a little bit in the building today, but we're trying to keep you at the design stage. So it's more conceptual. You, and you also want to think about sort of the, the content of the house. You know, is it three bedrooms? Is it five bedrooms? Whatever. We're not trying, I'm just using that as a realistic analogy, but we're not trying to start turning dirt, deciding exactly all those details about what a contractor would be able to build with. So think of yourself today as an architect of this, of these items. Um, and what we're gonna do is have a lot of handoffs. Like yesterday, we have a present size of the room. We're gonna ask staff to stay seated, if that's okay? Again, we all, you're all familiar with each other. So we're trying to make this informal of questions, flow. I'm sure you're gonna have some of those questions. We're trying to, again, honor those ground rules that we distributed yesterday. Hope you have those handy. Trying to keep your comments for two or three minutes, not necessarily repeat your point over and over and over. We're also trying to stay in the lane of what the focus is today. So this is not, as we said yesterday, but it's worth repeating, so I'll repeat myself after I've asked you not to repeat yourself, that today is really not a typical retreat. We're not trying to scrub, uh, the mission, vision, values, and the goals and objectives. This is really more the execution of that strategic plan. Not the typical where we're putting things up for review and scrubbing, okay, probably there's some assumptions that we're asking you to make. Okay? And as, as Jose said, the outcome of today is that direction. So the contractor would know more specificity, but not exactly all the details. So we're trying to still say a little bit at the, at a little bit of the design stage you come out of this. And then the staff will bring back to you the recommendations with more detail. So today, we're trying to cross that out. And I just want to use this word analogy. I'm sure this would be a former reference group. As you think about these items, you know, there's, oh, we have some engineers in the room. We have an engineer in the room. Allison, only engineer, finance people. We have finance people, the engineers and finance people sitting over here by. So sometimes engineers and finance people, because it serves them well, they tend to process things like this. There's an issue, there's an opportunity, there's a challenge. There is the answer. It's called convergent thinking. The opposite of this, and it's not better or worse, it's just different. Okay, planners in the room, yes. Um, HR people in the war, in the room, legal counsel in the room. Um, they think differently. When you ask them an issue, there's an opportunity, there's a challenge. It's called divergent thinking. Here's an option, here's an option, here's an option, here's an option. Their response to your question is, it depends. Right? Now we're asking attorney, he asked her no question, just the responses. It depends. I would offer to you in public policy, including discussions today, I think you're a lot in this space. Where I see councils, in some respects, waste a lot of time, is they're trying to look for the perfect solution, silver bullet, to address every public need. You have lots of options. Isn't that liberating? It's really the mix of those options, especially in the financing. How do you blend those? I hope they just, it's a really quick, simple way to remind people, there is no silver bullet, including some of their recommendations that you explored yesterday. These are sort of the, the best ideas, the best in class, optimal, uh, to optimize those capabilities. So. All right. So if you, you do have a PowerPoint in front of you, it's also about, it's a hard copy. So refer to that. You do have some timeframes on here, trying to stay on schedule. The goal, uh, I believe is to try to wrap up here by four o'clock. So you don't need to stay till four o'clock, but that's the goal. I try to stay on schedule. So the first item up, I'm gonna turn over to Devon. She's really gonna be doing a lot of presenting today along with staff members. So I'll turn it over to Devon.
Excellent. All right. Our thinker is not working today. Maybe the. Okay. Um, so yes, I think, uh, Patrick did a great job, obviously, wrapping up what the agenda is. Um, and so. The first piece that we're gonna touch on is kind of, uh, talking about what was ranked yesterday by council. So this is a reminder that facilities and housing, um, were ranked the highest and had all five councilors placed items there, followed by streets, bridges, and alleys. And then extra recreations, more water, drainage, and transit are all, um, at that same level there. So. What this slide is meant to represent is if the, um, city were to. Fund everything. If Sam renewed the taxes, we still can't afford to use everything. So we took all the priorities to discuss yesterday, took all the revenues, all the expenditures. Put it into one bucket, which we know, um, obviously, these are special revenues and, um, they have to be used for specific items. Um, this is what the amount is. Now, that revenue versus expenditures on the bottom. Um, is about 1.8 million of a deficit on average. Um, you'll see that year over year, there are some higher, um, options there. But we really wanted to show kind of a very holistic view of what we're talking about as we discuss the priorities today. So as we're thinking about options, um, we also wanted to provide council somewhat of a forecast of if there was a new, um, sales tax, what that would generate. So, um. Eight percent sale tax, a one and four percent sales tax, and a half percent. So, um, these are potential, um, possibilities for new sales taxes. Um, so if there was a leader desire there, um, there, those are kind of, as we're thinking about this conversation today, how much each one of those would generate. So, um, wanted to write that for council as well as we move through this conversation today. Um, also wanted to write council with, um, some of the information for what other communities have that does it relate to sales tax. Um, as you can see, Durango has a pretty diverse, uh, selection of earmark sales taxes compared to other communities, um, with, blend with ranks being the courses second. Um, and so just wanted to kind of provide what those tax rates are as we're looking at other communities. So. And then, um, as we're kind of moving through these conversations, um, wanted to provide council with the ability to see, um. If lodger's tax continues with the same percentages that are allocated and the visitor contract remains the same year over year with a three percent escalator on it. Um, we would continue to generate a fund balance in the lodger's tax fund that is dedicated specifically to. So wanted to provide council with, um, that information as well, um, as we're kind of discussing and working through some of the areas that have funding needs.
Are you saying that if that wasn't a 55% to marketing, that we changed that?
So as, as a lodger's tax dollars, yes, with that 55%. Um, it's throwing that fund balance and that's specific to that 55%.
So in 2027, we'd be paying. How much would that be going to visit Durango?
So that expenditures line, um, that is showing, um, all lodger tax expenditures, but that's with visited Durango's current contract.
Okay. Which is 55% of the.
So their.
Tax receipt.
Their contract is not actually 55%. And I may have been on, um, dreaming a little bit. Um, it's actually a negotiated contract that the city has with them, and I want to say it's closer to 1.6 million. Um, that's their contract with the city of Durango currently. So there's an excess hub lodger tax being collected that's not.
So have to spend up to 55%. The city could spend it. In. In marketing, but we still, so we're. See.
Lots of.
Devin, why is that fund balance going up? Because, uh, visit Durango has a contract, and, um, we're collecting more than their contract. And so it still has to go to marketing.
And so we're, but we aren't anticipating spending that on like other events?
So the prior, uh, city attorney, um, did not recommend that the community special events, for example, that $200,000 be allocated for that. Um, then it should not come out in a marketing bucket, if I remember correctly. Um, I think his definition of marketing was different than what the community special events, um, process was. If they were giving marketing for that, they covered the marketing piece of it, but not actually community special event. So.
So Devin, if we did a, um, new ballot measure and in it said something 55% to sustainable marketing with a cap of 1. whatever million dollars that we give. This could be what we have left over that we could spend on. Something else that we determine.
Sure.
Right?
Yeah, whatever the city. That's assuming that we're not going forward with the transportation and the council directive and that. That's what we would have if we changed it, so we weren't doing it.
Uh, no, this is specific to that marketing piece because it's the largest pieces of, of the pie. It's just 55% that's generating that.
So how much lots of, but the revenues is. So how much, so, but the revenues is total lodger's. And what you're taking out of it is the marketing portion of it.
You're only showing marketing.
But you're not showing the transportation and the council directive.
I'm sorry, so that expenditures, yes, that does include all of that.
All of that.
Yes, but the reason why it's growing with fund balances is because of our current contract with visit Durango. The city could allocate all the 55% to do marketing on its own or other types of sustainable marketing.
So we'd still be making, we'd still be referring in the original ballot language and drawing out the fund balance. Okay, gotcha.
Yes.
All right.
Because of the way the ballot language is stated today, and because of the contract with visit Durango, we're collecting more than their contract. So council could determine, give it, pass it all off for marketing, which is of course an option.
So I'm not clear why we heard that it was, the change in the lodger's tax was only going to be about $600,000. And so it wasn't necessarily worth, you know, we should weigh. In the last discussion, that was the number that was being thrown around that that might be available. But when I look at the fund balances, it's significantly more than that.
Increasing by 600,000, I think.
It's still significant fund balance.
Well, and it's a home housing, so.
Yes, and I think it's just because of the allocations we were discussing at the time.
Okay.
Like the very, like, certain percentage to housing.
Okay.
But, you know.
Thank you, no, I just wasn't clear to anyone else. I think I probably wasn't remembering the 2 million in the fund balance.
Right, and that's available for spending.
Right, and so this is a, this is compounding on top of it, so every single year to councilor Baxter's point, and it's adding in another 600,000, so that grows quickly. And this is just for the current visit director of project.
Okay. Thank you, Devin.
So then next up, we have the general fund opportunity reserve forecast. So with this, it's a recommendation is the general fund revenues. I did want to make enough of those general fund revenues. For updating our forecast because 2022's sales tax even higher than we had anticipated with. And so just wanted to really give a true, where we're believing today we'll collect. From 2019 to 2020, we saw a 20% increase in that sales tax. And that's likely due to the changes by pivoting to the sales and use tax system. So how that sales tax is permitted and our partnership with VOS. So that's a likely reason for that large increase. From 2021 to 2022, it's a 3% increase. So without reflecting, that's reflected in the revenues there across the board. In the expenditures, you'll see that there is about a 1% year-over-year increase. And the reason why we're 1% is because of the current issues that we're seeing with staffing and being able to be fully staffed, which is a national challenge for folks. We're not spending that entire budget amount year-over-year, and that's primarily having to do with the staffing pieces as well as our capital projects. Where we're going up for bids, we're not receiving bids and things of that nature. So it's kind of a, that global piece is effective. And then when you're looking at that opportunity reserve, so it would be 7.9 for 2023, and then 8.1, and then continues on throughout there. I think the recommendation for some of the general fund reserve would potentially be one-time funding because it's, you know, the forecast, of course, when you're forecasting three to five years, it's, it's somewhat comfortable, but beyond that, it gets a little bit difficult. So to have that support operations could potentially be problematic for this.
It is supporting operations under this, under this chart that you gave.
Yes, yes.
You are, you're balancing the general fund on the opportunities or shoulders with this, with this.
Yes, starting in 2027.
It's starting in 2027, yes.
Yep.
I don't think that that's, not only that, but when you get to 2031, actually, for that, you're, you're obviously also reducing some other reserves that are in the fund balance.
And that fund balance is the 25% carry-through as per the fund balance policy. And so I think that's, to councilor Baxter's point, that's a, that's a very good point there.
How can, how can 15 million, uh, be 25% of 60 million and 13,000 be 25% of 62 million? Wouldn't, wouldn't 25% of 62 million be higher than 25% of 60 million?
Yes, so those are going into the debt.
Yes, okay. So I think this projection is that we're, we're balancing the general fund on the fund balances and the opportunity reserve is suffering first.
Yes, and I think that's a good point, something that we're looking to pivot to in 2023 is making sure that what we're budgeting is at that 96% accuracy. Because as we look, if we looked at 2022, for example, we were about $4 or $5 million under spent of our budget. And so I think having that level of accuracy as, as the city has staffed and the department, I think that's really important, especially when we're looking at forecasting out.
So one of the reasons why we ended up doing the 2019 tax for streets was because the reserves were spent down to take care of the streets prior to that 2019 ballot. And there was nothing left in the, in the general fund to pay for streets. I, that's exactly what I'm seeing happening here, and I'm really concerned about that. And I know that's not for this conversation, we can have it another time, but I just wanted to point that out.
I think it's very valid.
I do too.
As we're talking about funding.
Can you explain one more time the change in revenues, the increment in the revenues and increase in expenditures? What percentages did you use?
Yeah, so the revenues is increasing by approximately 3%, so we looked at sales tax, and we looked at property tax, and some of those other charges and services that make up the lion's share of the revenues. And then expenditures, as I mentioned, it's just showing that 1% increase. And that's because we're underspending, because we have been underspending our budget due to staffing.
Okay, now, if, I'm just looking at this, if I start with a certain amount in revenues and I go up 3%, and my expenses are less, and they go up 1%, wouldn't your fund balance increase every year? Because if the revenues go up 3%, and the expenses go up 1%, or do I misunderstand something?
Yeah, so it's that 2023 number.
The 2023 number, it's between 2023 and 2024 doesn't show a increase in the 3%. And I'm assuming that's probably based on the finalization of your 2022 numbers, as you were talking. So the revenues, knowing that sales tax hasn't been, isn't updated in regards to what we know we finished in the year, that was like, just like any other estimates, will start changing in how all of these flow through. So it's a, anytime you look at your revenue forecast, there will be some changes to it. And I think that's where this one probably is a little bit off, just because of the revenue in 2022 not being completed yet to then show that continuous 3% increase within the revenue side at all.
The revenues, those revenues that shown there are directly from the sales tax.
That's all lodger revenues.
I, I still don't understand, if the revenues go up 3%, even if it's 27. Let's say 27. If the revenues go up 3%, and the expenditures go up 1%, I, I just don't understand how, how we'd have this key reason fund balance.
Because it's, as I was saying, between 23 number and 24 number didn't go up 3%.
Okay, well, it's.
And that's, so if you were to do the 3% going through, I think it changes your fund balance and your opportunity reserve number. So that is a part right there in regards to the numbers and the assumptions that you're made. That's where the part goes into an act of consistency. Because you go from 50, 50,788 to 50,936, that's not a 3%.
So. I understand what you're saying, but if I look at 27.
Olivia, we're missing 2025 and 2026. No, can I, we just finished the sentence. We're missing 2025 and 2026, so I don't know what's happened there. So maybe that is also part of this conversation, like what, why are we missing this to call it?
Basically, there may be an error here, trying to follow.
Yeah, there's a possibility. We can take a look at it and send that out to council if we follow it. But I guess maybe the, the point of this conversation, or council, is it the desire of council to have that opportunity reserve protected and not balance the general fund expenditures off of that? Maybe that's a, maybe that's a good takeaway, or maybe that's what I'm hearing.
I might suggest a follow-up, there's a chart that focuses on that. You know, keeping the required TAVR fund balance and the recommended 25% and then maintaining an opportunity reserve fund.
Unless we choose to spend it for.
Right, unless we choose, but at least it's not diminishing that level to zero.
Okay, so protecting that. And the graph is the picture.
Yeah.
You know, which is very helpful. Still.
Yeah.
I think probably just no fund balance favoring. Hey, it goes down by 2030.
I can follow up with council on that.
And I will also say, this is the first time we've seen a forecast as, as part of this process, so I appreciate that.
And I want to support what council Bosman was saying too. I think there is some issue here with the percentage increases. You know, it doesn't quite make sense, so there's something going on. It's stretching.
Okay. So again, bringing back two council priorities, and this is recap what those processes were ranked as we move into the next section here of the presentation, where we're looking at options for funding. So what we were looking at was under option A. So that was what council saw yesterday, those were all the option As, which is to fund all strategic and initiatives that staff have been published. Based on what the conversation was yesterday, the approach today would be for only to present their option As, and talk about potential funding for those options. And then the other areas, transportation, parks, recreation, streets, bridges, and alleys, will present their A, B, and C options. And for the goal of this conversation to be able to provide direction to staff on which funding approaches to take in these options, and whether any of that is either reauthorizing sales taxes, new sales taxes, or even options in pretty expensive aviation. So with that, we'll start off in with housing. And so if council would like, Scott Neva could certainly recap what these housing methodology options are. And then we'll just rewalk through what option As for housing, and then discuss potential opportunities for funding. So ready after I can read the methodology again, or are we clear on that?
No, it was clear.
Okay, great. Looking at the housing option A, it also, one of the conversations from the initial lodger's tax study session in November, or, I'm sorry, January, was that there may be an appetite to authorize new sales tax for housing projects. So I think just looking at those potential funding options, I think just the point where we can work with council to get incentives for staff to work on building the house, whether to give Patrick said a two-bedroom or a three-bedroom, and how we can move forward. We have Scott Neva. Share.
Answer any questions?
So I'll mention that I've spoken with commissioner Porter Martin about the joint sales tax. And they're very interesting in funding housing. Of course, you can always speak as we can. But I think there's a potential for a conversation about that. One of the things we talked about is, you know, we're not, we're not all that expense has been paid out of the joint, out of the joint sales tax. That's what we're using, if we're talking about the library. But if the library got, district got approved, there would be approximately $3.2 million in the joint sales tax. I think there's an appetite there for, having had those discussions numerous times in the RHA meeting and also in the economic alliance meetings, for some allocation of that for the housing. I think we would have to, I don't know, and this is something, a question for legal, probably. I don't know if, if when we did the library district ballot, we could also include in that that 3 million of the joint sales tax or whatever goes to the asset. I don't know if we could restrict it. My, one of my concerns would be is if we can't have that agreement, and maybe it's just the number of you, I don't know what that looks like. But if we can't have that agreement with the county that I'm concerned, that years down the road, the money might move from housing to something else, right? So that would be one of my concerns. The other one is if we were doing that, and what we really want to provide is 4.7 million, and we're doing three out of the joint sales tax, then we'd have trouble getting the other one, etc. So I just wanted to throw that out there, that I'd have those conversations and, and, you know, they, they also want to do childcare and a couple other things too, so.
Seniors.
Yeah, seniors, as a matter of fact.
They'd be very clear, seniors isn't, is in everyone's mind.
Thank you for reminding me of that, because that was one of the other things we talked about, is actually doing the capital expenditure on the senior center and improving it and upgrading it and doing that. So, you know, maybe that's what the 3 million goes, goes for. So I just wanted to put that out there as another conversation.
One more question on that conversation. You know, given that we're talking about a district, library district, is there, or how, if, you know, if funds were to go towards housing, a portion of that in any case, into the future, if that event did happen, how do we confirm that for that is in Durango or in the?
Yeah, so that's also another consideration, right? Because I believe the county is kind of looking at the RHA as their housing arm in that sense, which makes perfect sense. So we would have to, I think, I don't know if we could split it based upon where the sales tax is generated. So if it's generated in the city of Durango, that portion of the 3 million, you know, that percentage of the 3 million would stay in Durango, or how that would be, but that would be one of those, like, figuring out the details.
Can I ask of council, just one question, even pulling back. Are we as a council satisfied with the projected goal of taking 13 years to get to the 400? And I think that's the question, I, I would like to make certain as a council, do we want it more aggressive? Do we want it less? You know, because what they proposed is, and I think these numbers you're working on, is the 200, 200 units, 15% below market, needing 4.2 million and taking 13 years to reach our goal.
But I think what Scott was also saying during that is it's the time for construction, the time for staff, the time for, like, it all to come through, and that just because we want it done this year doesn't mean that it's going, it can be done this year, and that this seems like a very feasible number. And so that's what I would rather stand behind, is something that seems doable versus something like, yeah, I want to save the day, sure, but I, I don't, I don't want it to be, you know, it, it doesn't make sense.
So I just wanted to know, with 10 years, yeah, is 10 years doable? What is, what's comfortable and what's doable?
Like we kind of talked about yesterday, is the variability of unit production, revenues, and those types of things. So for instance, Best Western is able to happen this year, we'll get 120 below market units in the rolling. Smooth, you know, so we'll get a big hit there, a big win. But then maybe, you know, the next year is more of a planning and rebuilding phase, and then we have another thing, you know. So when we look at the averages, it's not like really 30 year-over-year. I think we've been very efficient and very effective with the funding that council's given us. Developed innovative programs like the APU, remade program, which is very low cost to the city, but, but gives us units for rings, for local workers, other bigger impact projects like La Posta Three Springs. So any of the locals, that's happening right now, we're getting those units online. La Posta Three Springs, that could realistically be, you know, 18 months, two years before that really starts to result in unit production. But when it does get rolling, that's going to be really big impact in a sustainable number of units over the, over the year. So it's, it's just looking out, how do we reduce things out over a reasonable time period? How do we use, you know, the numbers that we're seeing in these partnerships that were formed? How do we use that to bridge that, what we could do if we had one?
So mayor notes with this question, that's kind of interesting, and that if we were producing 200 units a year and we did the 5.6 million, we'd do it in 10 years, we'd have it in 10 years.
Sales tax, that would, that, which would be kind of interesting. Especially if you put it as a 10-year tax. I, I guess what I'm trying to say is, I, I appreciate your thinking and what it, what it took, but I also feel some urgency. And so I don't feel, you know, the same, I, I don't want to be unrealistic. And so I don't feel, you know, the same, I don't want to be unrealistic and jump to eight or six or something like that. But what I'm balancing, what might be doable with sense of that urgency.
And more clarity on revenue streams, meaning things like bond. We can go out and buy like Best Western, buy existing housing and then make that below market instead of extending infrastructure, getting dirt ready, building new units. That's the long lead up. Need it's dedicated revenue gives us a lot more firepower to make a bigger impact with existing.
Yeah, and I think, you know, one of the things that, that we thought about with this is, you know, there's not going to be a silver bullet to just do new development.
Right.
Right? We, we are looking at fair share. We are looking at what are the outcomes that we need to achieve? If we make changes to fair share, what will that look like? You know, if we say build it or donate land only, pay it fee, what would happen? You know, we're trying to watch some of the other entities that are trying that strategy. It could impact development certainly, but I also look at opportunities to look at our city owned assets, ways to look at acquisitions and developing parcels aside from just the partnerships that Scott was mentioning. Right? We have different avenues. We can go with this to really leverage unit production and not just focus on this public type of partnerships. To really maximize funding sources to get outcomes that we need to achieve on a ten year spectrum or longer, whatever that might hold.
But a time limited ballot initiative
Exactly.
gives us that ability bonding or going out and purchasing land, purchasing existing units, and that could make a big impact quickly. That's really the quick way that you need to deal with this is securing existing units, converting those values, those types of things. And that's what the option we're looking at, we got a bigger and dedicated.
And maybe purchasing land, and not being incented to.
So, so my concern with the, I appreciate you raising the joint sales tax. You know, I recognize that that's a potential source. It's not, it's further out. It's dependent upon a successful district and other things. And it's, it requires two different entities coming together on annual basis around a topic. So my own view was how to secure a sustainable and dedicated source of funding for housing. And I, I didn't see, I saw joint sales tax as a possible, oh, if we've got a great big project, well, maybe we could use some of it in, in three years, you know, I didn't see that necessarily as your answer.
Well, to your point too, if we look at the joint sales tax as a use for the county and the cities that are in municipalities that are in it, the childcare thing is a problem for everybody. Transit, and as we heard yesterday, the transit department would like to extend to, to Purn, to the airport, to Bayfield, you know, all these different places. Of that funding for the joint sales taxes and actually things that really benefit both county and city, cities.
It's one of my thoughts since we're kind of brainstorming. I think that there's an interest potential in seeing the library district on the ballot in November. Therefore, any of our discussion, I mean, I don't know, but I'm generally getting that impression. Potentially, we'll see. But if that were the case, we need to, of course.
Right. And I think the Board of County Commissioners meetings that we have, that's something you guys are going to have to really like discuss because people are going to want to know, what are you going to do with the three million in order to approve the library district? And I, I'm just wondering if transit and childcare are two huge things and the seniors.
And the seniors.
Are three huge things that can be. So maybe that's not a possibility.
Another quick point on, I think it's implied there on general fund transfer, but the opportunity fund balance that we saw there. If the right opportunity comes along, that could be a way that we could do something in the near term. It's not the long-term dedication security, but it could give us, like Best Western, like these other projects, another way to say to you, this is what we could do when we have the revenue to demonstrate that. So just put that on council's radar that, you know, that could be another way to use those funds to make an impact in the near term.
So you're saying we could take the general fund balance now?
The opportunity.
Can you put the new presentation on here?
Oh, yeah.
Real quick, because since we're talking about this, there are apologies, a lot of numbers. There was a, a formula that didn't get carried over. And so we have a new sheet that shows the upbated one. So we've updated to the cloud, so we could pull the new one down and show you the general fund opportunity reserve.
Great, wait, thank you. And for your quick turnaround. In real time.
Right. That's kind of like.
That's obviously a policy question for Council and if there's other.
And you're saying, yeah, right. You are saying that because currently it's higher than twenty five percent.
It's seven, seven million dollars in the opportunity.
So there's room.
So if we funded it for a year or two to show, to want to show like Durango, look what we can do with money during that. So if we wanted to do any sales tax in next April or, you know what I mean, sure, yeah, it might be better timing, I think.
Yeah, it wouldn't be next April. It would be two years.
Or, or the November, because obviously.
Or November twenty four.
Yes, okay.
Or you could, you could say, here, we're going to jumpstart it with this, but here's what we need to keep going and do a sales tax initiative in November.
Right. I, I do think it would be important to show the cities putting some of its reserve fund into that because just sitting on it also isn't putting it to use.
Right.
General fund could be used for the operations side.
Oh, now we've got them all.
Now, I want to put some serious asterisks on this. Because you're going to see a big number and you're going to be like, okay, this is where good. But this assumes, remember the assumption is a one percent increase in our expenditures with a three percent continuous increase in our revenues. Where we're at today because of being in this hiring crunch and personnel savings and salary savings. Do I think after twenty twenty five, this starts getting to be unrealistic? Probably so. Anytime you look at your forecasting, it's usually the two, three years looks good. We won't know what happens if sales tax decides at some point that it's not going to continue to see the increases that we're seeing.
That's right.
If it does dip down, this changes everything within this model. So I knew as we were going through, just looking through the numbers, that there's going to be some parts into it. It's a very simplistic look forward. If it stayed today where it is, this is what it would be. I don't know if revenues can continue to, we have the capacity to increase three percent every year for opportunity. I think we're going to see at some points just us meeting where our size and see where we really are at. So I would look at this being twenty three, twenty four, twenty five, maybe twenty six. But the farther you get away, the less accurate these numbers become. We're just taking some of our best estimates as where we're at today.
But if Council if Council committed the gap, the three point two, that's right here, the, for housing. We could, well, we can't commit, we were future councils, but if we like say, okay, this is a great, you know, source for housing. We believe in housing until we can maybe figure out how to get a dedicated source in some way. Technically, you could go through twenty twenty five ish with this funding then. Yes?
Yeah, I think that that would be something that would be, you could look at being able to make it to twenty twenty five or eight percent.
And we can appropriate it now. Yeah, we can appropriate it now for twenty twenty three.
And I think the other piece too is, you know, as you use that opportunity reserve, and again, I apologize for that prior slide. But if you use that opportunity reserve, then obviously you need to come on on itself.
Right. I want to say, you know, you apologize is good. I'm actually happy because instead of having zero dollars in thirty two, we have forty million dollars.
Asterisks, asterisks on that, a lot of asterisks.
Here we go. I mean, inflation right now is way above that. And I think that this is a very, very optimistic point of view. So I'm not going to look past twenty twenty five at this point.
That's a, that's a good point. I'd like to say one of the parts that what we have specifically with Durango is twenty nineteen, we used to base as like this career year, best like it's been. And twenty nineteen, we look close to every time since I've been here. So we are in this new kind of realm with revenues, which a lot of it does have to deal with sales tax. You know, looking at kind of what is it that's driving it? One of the big things is that new system that we're in because it changed the way in how we're collecting sales tax. And we're beginning to believe this was what the normal should have always been. And then we're capturing sales tax that we never had captured, and that's why we're seeing some of these increases. But it's one of those parts of a cautiously, cautiously optimistic, you know, would say at some point one percent expenditure increase is not a realistic number. And I, I do agree, I comes back to the twenty twenty five is probably the farthest part that you should probably take a look at this is saying somewhat realistic after that. You know, I think that you're going to see some changes in regards to how we deal things within our operations. Some departments are going to need more personnel or expenditures will go through, you know, just with inflation, as y'all pointed out. We've just historically been living in a place where with COVID and the impacts of that in the workforce, we've been seeing savings into that part.
I can add to one other piece as we're looking, as we're thinking about staffing. One of the Baldridge initiatives that we'll be working on is determining a matrix about staffing. And so what is that decision point of when staff get added? And so that's, that's a piece two. Through that lens, and since this is off of budget, again, the twenty twenty five.
I, I'd like to say, Jessica, I think you made a really good point in showing the community what we can do with some dedicated funds for housing. As a way of saying, this is, you know, this is what we've done with six hundred thousands and this amount. Here's what we could do. So I think that's a really important kind of showing as part of the thing. And the other thing I think that's really important is as we think about a new police station and the facilities. If that's going to be bonded, you're going to need how much percentage upfront to, is it ten percent of whatever the the, if say we bond for forty, forty million, I believe you need about ten percent before you start the process.
In design?
No, it's, it's part of the bond.
It's part of the bond requirements. I believe you actually have ten percent or something.
There, there's no requirement to, to make a down payment. Kind of the policy, you put something down probably lowers the problem costs. But there's no absolute requirement. A good example is the waste water line. It was done with zero percent down.
Okay, okay.
So it's, it's possible, but.
I, I was just trying to ask, when you think about that opportunity reserve, that there might be a few other things that are needed for that in addition.
Well, and true, we've had, how much money did we get from our budget into housing? And so, yeah, so we.
Twenty four, do we know what the balance is for our budget funding? If we, since we use.
I mean, I don't, I don't necessarily know.
The cost of our division potentially, if we did that again in twenty four, since those funds are different.
But if we said, if we, if we gave, yeah, we, we've now done four million the previous two years or last year anyways. And then four or five, whatever the number is for the next year. So now nine million dollars the city's put in, and then you, you don't have to go all the way to twenty twenty five.
No.
You know, I, I was just saying that we could, just throwing numbers.
And I think what I also wanted to say on the, the also larger issue for a council is to consider, you know, it's money in the bank, but it, we're not putting it to use. And so you, you look at those numbers with all the asterisks, that's assuming we don't spend it, which is not what I want to do with an opportunity reserve. So the policy might be, how much do we actually want to spend from this nice, healthy, almost eight million dollars that we have available? What's, what does the council think is an appropriate use, recognizing that if we spend fifty percent, sixty percent, then those numbers, it's going to take a while to build it back up.
For me, in an opportunity reserve, I don't want to ever put a cap on like what we can spend. Like if, I don't know what it would be. I can't even like give you like a scenario. But if something came up and we were like, we need seven point nine million dollars right now. And Council was like, yes, let's go. That's why we have a fund balance there. That's the safety net. Like I don't want to have to have a safety net in the opportunity reserve personally.
Okay, that wasn't the intention. The intention was.
I just was hearing, wanting to hear.
I, you know, I'm, I'm kind of.
You know, mine's not really related to this, it's somewhat different, so go ahead. I don't want to, but I just have a question.
Okay, go ahead.
Different. It's on facilities. You know that seven, that first spreadsheet that you showed us that had all the expenditures? Because now that we're talking about, you know, something for housing, the facility is one of the very first one that had the number in it. You've got that, how much expenditures we need? You have in there facilities, building maintenance at seven fifty, but you didn't pull forward the two point two in capital upgrades. And so I wasn't sure if I'm missing that.
So the two point two is a part of that two thousand five sales tax debt. So it comes where to reauthorize what's currently paying the library for Rita Road.
Oh, you put it there.
Yeah, so it's in twenty twenty six, it starts, that's why it jumps, because we still have Rita Road to pay off. And then it carries seriously in twenty twenty nine, that's when that two point seven is just the.
So you would do the building maintenance through that and you'd leave an option. That's assuming that we, that voters approved that reauthorization for that purpose.
Right.
Okay, but you didn't, you, so since you, since you put it there, you, okay, it's in the two thousand five. Okay. Capital improvement, Florida, and then it says Florida and library.
That's with the infrastructure.
But then it would go Florida, library, and yeah, facilities.
The library ends in twenty twenty.
Six.
Six.
Florida just has one year out.
Yeah. Okay.
But we will, theoretically, we will, of course, we have this conversation before.
No, I, I, I think.
So you plug that for us.
As an option for consideration.
Okay, about it.
Well, I'm inclined, I think if we show what the city is willing to commit and how important this is to now. I, I'm inclined to say that we take money out of the opportunity reserve as we're all kind of talking about. And I don't know if that's four million dollars or three point five or exactly what that looks like. I'm sure the staff would need to sit down and do some, some number crunching and all that. Out of the opportunity reserve for twenty twenty three and for twenty twenty four, while putting a ballot measure on the twenty twenty four November ballot for housing. And to be determined at that point, because we'd have a full another year of experience to know what the percentage to create the relevant amount. I, I, that makes a lot of sense.
So if I can, that, that would be, and so we're assuming from staff, that's option A, that's the fully funded. And then using the opportunity reserve fund for twenty three, twenty four, and then having a kickback maybe in twenty twenty four with the council at that point to decide possible.
Ballot or what?
So writing this down. And if we did the opportunity reserve fund, we're not making decisions, I would still have to come back through council. But we're, we want to make sure at the end of every one of this, we have kind of that gauge plan to go through. I think that's whatever. I just want to make sure.
Yeah, opportunity fund used for two years. I don't know exactly what the numbers would be. So that in twenty twenty four, we could be fully prepared for the ballot measure to fund the next ten years for housing.
And recognizing we can only commit one, one fiscal year at a time.
Right, no, of course.
Yeah, I mean, so we want to remind, in case somebody gets confused.
But, but that's a kind of like the path.
I like the path.
We do. I do too. I support it. I think it's bold. Yeah.
And to answer the question about the remaining ARPA funds, if, so the Costa Road is is eight hundred and fifty thousand, which hasn't been brought to council for offers for appropriation yet. But the total remaining ARPA funds with that look what Costa Road kind of placeholder is one point three million. So I agree, okay, and those have to be utilized by any point right there.
Okay, so one, going back one more time on the option A, on the slide, this one, this slide.
Yeah.
Housing forecast. I've had, yeah, so just, I'm just looking at those expenditures. So we will, you said in the one graph that we have a housing gap of three point something. Three point two. Here it's just a little different. So I'm kind of pull these two together in my head somehow.
Oh, so there is existing revenues with the ARPA funds and then what exists for the fair share and the recent.
Okay.
And then what's also in there that can't be utilized for that is that staffing. So that's where you're seeing those total expenditures that includes their staffing.
Yeah, like combined, like you posted. These two, these six point four, yeah, I see. Is that what you're kind of doing?
Yeah.
Okay, because I thought this is almost one year of gap of funding.
So basically, we just need staff to come back with, with ARPA funds, with the current fund balance. What would be needed out of the opportunity fund in twenty twenty three and twenty twenty four before we make the ballots? What would be needed out of the opportunity fund in 2023 and 2024 before we move to ballots?
I, I'll make one comment on this housing topic. So the revenues are forecasted to be about 450,000 a year. If I do a back of the napkin calculation. Using prior data provided by staff during meetings and presentations. I am going to be closer to $3 million equivalent in revenues. So that is a significant difference. Now, I would really like to understand more why those numbers are so different. I would love to sit down with staff, with council, anybody in the community that wants to understand why there's such a different numbers. But being constructive and moving forward, I think using opportunity funds. For the next couple of years will allow staff to come up with factual numbers from history. And a clear understanding of how the forecasts will go. So I, I think that's a little bit my concern.
I understand that. I, I think that in order for staff to have that conversation with us, they'd have to know what you were calculating your numbers on. So you'd have to provide us with how you were getting those numbers so that we.
So right now, there's some questions. But there seems to be a consensus around. Staff coming back with recommendations for what they can do at what level of funding. To be used from the opportunity, with both the ARPA funding, what you're going to be doing with that and the additional funds from the opportunity fund. In the year 2023 and then you would be proposing as well for 2024. Recognizing that 2023, this council could do it at any point in appropriation. So is that clear for folks that that's kind of the direction?
Another clarification too is, other than the ARPA money, which we have to use or goes away, opportunity money is there and there's, you know, can be some general policy. Using our housing, we don't need to go in and like transfer that to the housing without knowing in more detail. Here's this project, these couple of projects, let's do it now and do this. So there's, we're not asking you to just move it for general uses, but we're going to come with a program to make specific outcomes. So is that just, does that make sense?
And I also wanted to add, and Councilor Bosman's is going to provide his math. And so we can look at that and understand where, what he, his math is producing so that staff can, can address that.
I would also add to that some thought into a recommendation for percentage sales tax increase for the ballot too. Just a preliminary draft conversation about that, so we kind of know. So an idea of what the ballot language for 2024 might look like. What that means is you have to have a sales tax percentage in there. So is it 3% that produces that or 4%? I mean, a half a cent or a quarter cent or eight cents? I mean, I know based upon this, it looks like it's a half a percent, but I, I'd just like to have some more replant.
And is it time sensitive? I mean, rather than in perpetuity, is it a 10 year? Kind of like the 2019 sales tax, so you can show, you know. If we're doing this right, we're, we're altering the inventory in such a way that. It's a little bit more market drive driven.
I personally would say it has to be like 10 years.
Yeah.
And there's some data around some of the other communities in Colorado that have done this. And so I think it would be meaningful to kind of compile that for staff to spend some time to, to demonstrate what does that achieve? How they achieved it? What were some of those percentages of sales tax for a temporary 10-year period? Some may re-up that or just extend it in after that 10-year period.
And the ones that failed. Like all the failed.
Look at those. And where I'll add is this is probably a two-step process. You're going to come back to us relatively soon. With how to spend, how to invest, not spend, how to invest that opportunity fund money in 2023 so you can start showing results. More quickly. The tax language and other that may be a little bit further off. Is that, does council see that as the steps? Okay.
Something you might want to keep in mind when you go through these findings of that, as you said, sometimes it's, you know, most unconsciously is they take the peanut butter approach. They take some, spread it out to everything, which sounds really. Sometimes the impact of the peanut butter approach is negligible if you're just sorting it on some sort of percentages. So I think we should go through these different items. You're trying to determine what level of funding you need, which you just said, to make an impact as opposed to kind of get you. Out of the gate, but it doesn't have much of an impact beyond just getting out of the gate.
Can I just move on to what you thought the balance of the ARPA funding was for housing?
So the balance of the ARPA funding is 1.3 million. About 850,000, that doesn't include that 850,000. So what's remaining in our funding is around 2.2 million. But there was the desire for us to use 850,000 for.
Okay, moving on to the next topic.
Okay, so facilities. And so again, this is that option A that was presented yesterday. Put it that as part of the package. Right, right, since it has high council support. And so looking at.
I'm sorry, may I do one more thing? And Jose, when you, when council, when staff comes back to us with that proposed opportunity fund, can you then also recalculate? If we actually approve that, what that might, what the opportunity fund might look like then in 2024, 25 or 26? So that we're not looking at that in number, it's going to be a mush. If you'll do that, it's part of it. Thank you. I'm sorry, Devon.
No problem. And so when we're looking. You have the chair and Cindy available as well. There's the Gavin funding, which is that 2.7 annually and that is based on the need for new facilities. And as well as the 850,000 in, I'm sorry, the 750,000 annual building support. So what is on this slide or what staff has prepared, it should council desire to reauthorize in 2005. Having. Half of, or the quarter, the half of that quarter cent go towards, half of the half cent, sorry, half of the half cent go towards debt service. And so that's what reflected in that, in that piece there.
And that debt service. Would then also be based on a successful bond. I just wanted to look, queue it up, so there'd, there'd be a vote for a bond. And we would pay for the debt service on that out of a separate vote for the 2005 sales tax. Not just two different things?
Yeah.
It'd have to be, I'm just making certain, it'd have to, so you have, you have to get two yeses. Is it?
If, if I may.
Yeah.
No, I'm.
We're, we're trying to get, I'm trying to understand.
Okay, if, if I may, you are accurate that we would need a yes to continue to use the. Or to reauthorize for 2005 at least half of that for, as it's currently phrased, capital purposes. And if that were the case, then we have the option of going to a sales tax bond, right? Which will need another yes. Or as we have discussed and is not necessarily settled. Use certificates of participation with those resources to pay them.
Yeah, that has issues, yeah.
So there, there are a couple of alternatives, but I want to make that clear. You can go ask for another bond and back that with a sales tax pledge or another kind of tax pledge. Or we could issue certificates of participation.
So it's happening at the same time or would you deal with separate elections?
It, it typically is one with two questions, one for the resource and one for the bonding. The bonding is typically phrased in a way where if the financing fails, the bond automatically fails. So they do have language that kind of counts that way. But again, it depends on what we, how we want to address it. And to Devon's point that she did bring up that it's meaningful, there are the two years of authorization, you know. That, that ends in O, or in 2026, we have the debt service payment for the Florida Road approved ones one day.
So I have a question for Jose. The police station has been on the list forever. And if you, if you waited till this re, till this was coming up for renewal. Does that mean that the police station would have to wait another two years? If this, for this mechanism to pass, or is there a way to address that pressing need in advance of some of the other needs?
Yeah, that's a good question. What I would tell, or I would say is that it's always going to be a matter of time. Building a building, community impact and board, everything else that we could get to. I mean, even looking at, at a best case scenario. You know, 18 to 24 months before we're starting construction. I mean, you still have design, you still have a public input process. I'm not sure we can speed it up any faster than where it is. Maybe we could speed it up by six or seven months. I think we could look into that, but I still think we have some significant time that's going to need to pass still as we get everything in line. Because this project, while it didn't really start, we had another option we're looking at, it really just started a few weeks ago. So I, I don't know that it's a ability to, we're saying, hey, we need to move this up and starting tomorrow, we'd be in a better spot. I think this timing is going to be kind of where it needs to be anyways.
So if this were a 2026, if it were in conjunction with its sun setting. The earliest you might have money available would be 2027?
Well, so I want to clarify something because we had this discussion before, that if we did not re-up the 20, the 2005 at all. We would still have acquired, accumulated enough money at the end of 2026 to pay off all the Florida Road and Library. So I'm not certain why in 2027 we're showing such a large payment. And we don't have that money in the fund balance to pay for. Because if that were the case, then starting in 2027, we would be able to be funding the police department and the whole facilities then at 2.7 million.
So it's in 2026, if this were to, that has a 2.7 million in it in 2026? So that is saying this were to be reauthorized in 2026? So it has the.
But 2027 also has extra, it doesn't, isn't 2.7, it has an extra payment.
Yes, and that's because Florida Road until the end of 2028.
Right, so we were supposed to have accumulated enough money in the fund balance before the end of 2026 to have paid both of those off. And we had that conversation, I mean, we.
And I think that's because if we look at 2026, we have that $2.7 million in there, which is essentially two payments. So that would be if in 2026, the debt service was approved. It has $2.7 million in it and so that's what's showing there. So yes, if that, if this initiative did come into effect in both 2027. Then it would be.
So 2027 should only be $2.7 million, 2028 should only be $2.7 million is what I'm trying to say.
Yeah, well, so I guess if we took out the $2.7 million in 2026. And then utilize that $3.2 million that would be available, you could pay off 2027 and 2028 early. But because we've added the 2.7 in there with the assumption saying it was approved, then that no longer makes it worth getting up early.
Okay, so I, I would just like to say, for me. You know, the need, because when we were candidates, we toured the police facility. So this has been a stated community need at least since 2019 and possibly earlier.
Right, well, the ballot.
And so, so using this, it maybe makes sense, this is my own opinion, it may make sense to use this for other facilities. But not being able to address the police station with this, if it can't be done before 2028, I just think eight years to address this is.
I don't think that's necessary. And I don't think that's necessary anyway, because obviously if we re-up early. But we could use what's remaining in the opportunity fund to fund the design and engineering, but it also isn't just the police department. It's, it's a, we're looking at the possibility of this thing kind of like a campus in some ways and trying to figure it out that way. So it's not just the police station, it's so much more to do. It's, it's, it's where people who work at Carnegie and River City Hall and at City Hall work, how do we create the right facilities for all of that? So, and I think we've got money left in the opportunity fund to start that process.
And, and the point might be then, we're showing the community, we are using our money to get us there, to give you all the answers of what this is going to look like. But we also do need to, we need a dedicated source to cover the ongoing maintenance of this huge physical plant that we have.
Does this take into account like any of the, the current PD facility, once it's vacated, land, City Hall, River City? Like what is that? Like all, like, because that, that will all be assets?
It'll be assets, I would look at it, that's going to be a council, a council, I mean, it's not huge, but it's just going to be a council decision, because I think you're going to have two options. A, do we want to divest ourselves of those properties and put them on the open market? Or do we want to hold on to them and either be in a public-private partnership where we can control what those look like? So those are two options. I think what this sets the table for us to do. While not approved and not going through it, at least give staff a, a beginning part of, this is, this seems to. We're going for, so if we're going to do these facilities, we can start developing a better plan, answering questions for residents, we're like, why are you going to do this? Well now, you say, well, it hasn't been approved, we have an idea of this is how the funding goes, this is what the effects would be. It really sets the path for us.
So Kim, to your suggestion, I know the, using the funds. Right now, Jose, if you didn't tap the opportunity funds, how would you envision paying for the design? A March meeting, I believe, with the fire station. And you're doing the due diligence, if that all went through. How would you envision tapping the funds to start the design for a larger effort for the, more of the campus? Or would that be, is the opportunity fund your best source?
I mean, the opportunity fund right now is, I think it's going to be the easiest source to do it, but we still have time. And what, what, deciding here, I won't know what happens in three months, there may be something that shakes out, that's like, oh, here's a different, or a better option. I, I can't give you all of those answers right now, but it does help me begin to clarify, okay, where are things coming through, what opportunities are available?
I think it makes the most sense.
So I guess one of the questions would be as far as re-upping. I mean, not, not that we wouldn't put the half of it toward the facilities, because I think, I kind of think we're in agreement on that. Is, is it in 2024? Is it in 2023? When do we do that? And would it be better to do the housing before we do the facilities? And that's, that's kind of the question, I think, you know, because I, I think housing is so important and we get that going and then we, and then we're re-up. Because that's an additional cost to our community, whereas this is not an additional cost, it stays the same. So I'm, I'm wondering if we don't also need some more guidance from staff about.
Timing.
Timing.
So, and again, I'm just going to read what Melissa said earlier, there's a possibility of the library district coming up by 2023. Then there might be, depending on what staff's recommendation, you could be lining up a 2024. Sales tax initiative on housing after you've demonstrated. And then, I mean, you, so you're just, you're.
You know, 2025 be the.
2025 could be the.
I'd re-up at this one.
And you're coming, I mean, it's, I don't know if it's better to come all at once, it makes me nervous, or to show a methodical. Here's what we've done, here's how we're addressing these competing but equally important needs.
I like that. You know, I'd like some more research on that, but I like that.
And it then means tapping. Tapping at least the opportunity fund for housing and having Jose come back with options for doing the design for. What a police station and multiple facility might look like.
My only concern is for the 2005, when does that have, like, when does it have to pass by?
2026, right? I think it's sunset December of 2006.
I would almost say. The housing, like, you know what I mean, like. Like, it'd be, it's not like, like that, this one, please test the waters and then take a breather and then do it, you know what I mean?
Because we did the twenty, two thousand five.
How much should, how much should.
We did it in twenty fifteen.
How much should the PD fail by last time?
It wasn't the PD, no, it was the kitchen sink.
Oh, it was the kitchen sink.
And it was like. Yeah, it was a lot, but it was the kitchen sink.
And in property tax, that's just. I would like to see housing go, so if library district goes in twenty twenty-three, if it does, I'd like to see housing be the first initiative after that. Or maybe at the same time, if we get our.
I wanna see research, I don't wanna make that call right now, because I also have some issue, like, I wanna talk about how the initiative anyways, because I think things can change and I wanna know what's gonna be on there. Anyway, so I just, there's like lots of big things with the ballot issues. I like this two thousand five going to facilities, just half of it.
So, so I'd like to say, I also support going to facilities. And to your point, Jessica, I think what you, we can lay out, it's not set in stone, it's the most aggressive might look like this, that we've got, that community, we've got.
I don't wanna sit here and say, this goes first, this goes second, this goes third. I wanna say, give me some research. I agree that two thousand five should go to facility, this facility plan that we have. I'm worried, let's take a look at it and see what the best, we do it is.
And to confirm, two thousand five.
So that's half of it.
Yeah, just, yeah, the other half, just confirm, and I, I'm sure it's in here, definitely. It's going to maintenance, parks and back, where it's.
Post.
Right? Post, post, okay.
See, I was gonna say, that could also go to transit. What she's saying right now.
Right now.
Right now, we haven't, like, on this slide, all we're talking about is that.
That's another discussion. The other thing's next. Okay.
So I think it's important to remember, as you talk about bonding issues, there's a lot of experience in the room, of staff that have gone through bonding issues, councils that have gone through bonding issues. I think it's, I always try to advise clients, the merit of the item does not carry the day. It's gotta somehow be public facing, right? Then what a lot of organizations, a lot of cities do is the necessary things with the provocative things. So provocative things can keep lots of vote, and the necessary things are sort of the add-ons. You start with the necessary things, it's not compelling to the public. It's just not, and that's the optics, right? Think about what schools do, a lot of staff, they put a lot out there, put a lot of staff effort. Somehow it's about need, and often, I'm not trying to be cynical, but just think of, need is subjective based on who the audience is. And it's how do you blend those together?
This, this has another half to it, and that goes to the post right now. And so, I mean, to what you're saying is that if that was the case, was re-upping that half to post and that other half to facilities, we would have a sexy down there, not so sexy. That's what I was kind of thinking. Yeah.
I mean, the optics do matter in most, because people are going to vote, they tax themselves, even if it's reauthorization. They wanna know what they're sort of receiving in return. And sometimes the, the necessary things just aren't compelling to the general public. So if we look at it, two thousand five.
So yeah, that's the debt, two thousand five. Debt service.
Just debt.
Yeah.
Okay, that's primary, that's it.
So the third one, because our, our third priority is streets.
Yeah.
So I, I'd like to make certain that we're actually just discussing in the order that we probably. We had five for housing and facilities, and I think streets had four, and then the rest were all tied. So I, I'd like to make certain that we.
For sure.
Follow that order.
I'm worried.
Remember. Streets.
So we're on to the next item, which is streets, which rank second, third, what have you. How do you know? Third priority. And so with that, I do want to be able to just kind of, as we introduce this, to kind of put now in council mind, that, that, that lens. The other two, we did option A because they had all that support. So that was kind of easy. Now, as we get to four here, I have the unanimous support. They also, as we said at the very beginning, we can't fund everything. And so I think as we get into these, these next ones, it's really a beginning of discussion from council, though. And I'll have Deb go through what option A means, what option B means, and what option C means. These are gonna be a little bit more of, what's that level that we wanna be able to, to fund this? That we think is the gauge for, for staff to look at. Doesn't mean the decision's been made, and I wanna make sure that's pointed out. As we said, somebody was option C, and if that's, it could be. But it does begin to help us find a way in how we can begin to finance everything and fund everything. So with that, I'll pass it on to Deb.
Thanks, Jose. So this is the same information that council was, uh, mentioned yesterday. And so if we look at the gaps in funding, the street system maintenance and improvement included the four hundred and twenty-five day transfer operate. So there should be, there's a, 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 a council to not have that, to not make the sales tax transfer into the general fund. There's also the three million funding in excess related to some of the planned Ida Submarx in twenty thirty. And so that's Drago, we sell the close road, and then that's the downtown excess. I think there is an opportunity, I found out yesterday, that the downtown excess could be funded out of the two thousand fifteen. Yeah, we actually had a conversation about that, and that's not the case, there is a. Okay. Perfect, thank you. And so potential funding options, obviously there's nineteen, there's grants. So the conversation to, to be really tactics, and we calculated increase, as, as Allison discussed yesterday, new tax and then bonding. You know, if you think about during the basic park, if there's an opportunity to bond there, and include some of those street improvements in there. So those are some of the potential funding options. And I know Allison has some great lists of project specific information. So if there's questions on that, we can certainly discuss some of that. But really, as we're looking at these forecasts here, there is some deficiencies with being able to fund everything that has the energy plant projects in the trip twenty thirty, as well as the, those energy plant projects. So if this is option A, can I pause here for a second? If there's any questions that council may have, and Allison will be to jump in, share anything you'd like.
I, um, I, I think I'd, I'd go ahead and say a little bit there, that this is really the, the bells and whistles and bows and everything, you know. Uh, you know, this is what I think about as I drift off to sleep. I do not truly expect that every single item is likely to be funded because there are higher priorities. And I understand that everything on the planet cannot be funded. So we have looked really hard at option B and C. But, um, I think just in terms of looking to the future and where we'd like to go over time. Then this begins to lay our roadmap and give us an idea of, of what we could do at a hundred percent. And I think the responsibility, a lot of responsibility falls on, um, public works to, um, ascertain what appropriate grant funding is available, how some of these could be packaged into potential bond considerations. There, there are a lot of pieces that go into this, and I'm totally willing to be wrong. That a hundred percent is where we want to be this year. But I wanted to start this discussion. Um, it's, it's more money than has been spent on streets in the past. But it really starts to address alleys, bridge repairs, uh, sidewalk districts, things that have not been focused on in the past. But, um.
So for this, um, for, oh, for option B, is it only a half million dollar, um, gap? Is that, but that's, sorry, I would, um, go back to the page before that, yes. Five and a half. Oh, it's not even. It's, we're making money. Okay, sorry. I just want to, I.
Right, yeah.
Oh, I know.
Yeah. Question for you on the, on this one from today's package. The, um, the expenses, um, for those streets, bridges, and alleys, one goes to twenty twenty eight. Right? So what it sounds like, or what it appears like is. The nineteen sales tax recovery. Because it's ending when twenty twenty eight.
And, uh, we typically aren't rating windows just because it's projecting for product construction cost down to beyond twenty five years is not. Ah, sorry, twenty five, beyond five years since we have an successful.
Okay, well, so, but what I'm, where I'm going with this, so it's, do you know where I'm going with this? Is if the twenty nineteen sales tax were re-upped, because it goes to until twenty twenty nine, right? For twenty twenty eight.
Twenty eight. If it was in nineteen.
Twenty nineteen, yeah. And it's a ten year, so it's twenty twenty eight.
That would be my assumption.
Okay. If it was re-upped, then you can take the costs that you're projecting and spread them out over another five or ten years rather than trying to just get them done in ten, in the next six years.
Absolutely. And if it were all available in this, um, plan and we went to the option A, we could get it done. If I hear, kind of like what we're saying with Scott, if this is unreasonable and we need to scale it back, then we would look at getting it done in a ten-year timeframe, depending on, you know, when the actual costs come out to be, how the, how the market moves. And if the sales taxes, we free offer us.
That's a big if.
Well, it's, it's not, not if we perform on, on the commitment that was made when they did the twenty nineteen sales tax. You and I got elected that same election cycle. So if they perform on that commitment and over the next five years, you know, it's shown to the community that we're really doing that with the streets. I think it would be a fairly straightforward conversation. Because otherwise, I'm not sure how we can fund this. That's, that's, yeah. I don't want to hear some ideas because.
Well, so that's my concern is, um, you know, first of all, that, that vote passed narrowly. I will remind folks. And, and I ran on the situation that we have a structural problem with the budget and that we, well, I didn't run on that issue, but I spoke about it, that we haven't figured out from our general fund how to take care of our streets. We're constantly are depending upon us dedicated funds. And so waited till twenty twenty eight to figure out how we're going to take care of that or re-upping it sooner. I have a concern to that. I don't think it would, it necessarily is going to be as straightforward. I think I would prepare for.
Opposition. I think women, streets are, the general fund can't keep up with streets. I mean, I, I think that's become apparent. And given that we have a lot of past maintenance that needs to be taken care of, and we look at Main Street where we're talking about, the pipes underneath it and all of that anyway. And I really do believe that if we perform to what we said we were going to do and impress the community, um, I think they listen to value. So, so I'm, I'm going to play.
Fund base for parks and recs. So it's a choice. The general fund could pay for parks and recs, it could pay for streets, it could pay for the library, it could pay for, uh, stormwater management. It all comes down to choices. And, uh, because, you know, the general fund is the general fund. So I can, you know, it, the councils, future councils can choose that. So I, I see it as a bigger policy question of what has to be paid for and what can be paid for from dedicated sales.
Yeah, that is interesting. And option B, that your fund balance is growing.
Yeah.
Five million in five million in twenty twenty eight. So, I mean, reality, you could do, you could almost get to a million in alleys or something. Depending on what the council at the time wanted.
Right. And, uh, we, um, love that in putting together the, um, the CIP plan. I'm looking at expenses. And it's not until yesterday, when Gavin and I get together, that I see the actual impact on the fund balance. So that does indicate.
You could add some.
That there, the option B could be a little bit more robust, probably a million dollars a year. I, um, invested toward particular areas that I think be high value based on the comments.
About the.
I'm not mad with like Drango Mason not being in there, the post the next steps. Like, those are big, big efforts, and that most can be funded some potentially somewhere else and by something else. The alleys and the, you know, like you were saying, bridge repairs, when they're, I mean, you get anticipated that, I don't think. It's not on this one, but you anticipate that for a few years. But like, those things are a big deal, and we do need to take care of them. And so if we can.
In this model, I'm, I feel like we're option B. I'm option B too, because it's kind of living within the means. Yeah. That's what the voters approved. And it, it seems like it's laying out well into different categories, and it makes a lot of sense to me.
And I would put more money into alleys and sidewalks because you have it in your fund balance there.
Right.
Yeah. And, and make that commitment bigger, particularly since Alice was specifically mentioned in the, in the ballot on my book. So I, I like this option.
Yeah. I, I like option B. I also sound like a broken record. There needs to be a contingency plan come twenty. There. But there needs to be a plan for if, how to. If there's not a sales tax option. And again, that's a.
I think that's, that's so far in terms of things changed, that we would make better, better decisions would be made without.
Sure.
I'm sure about that.
I do think separating new construction out from pavement preservation begins to start that identification of what is needed for ongoing preservation. Five years, we will have an excellent average to be looking at in addition to, uh, an asset management system that we're working toward in general.
So Allison, I have a question for you from yesterday. When, when I see these fund balances, proposed fund balances, and you're talking about adding money to the alleys, which I also support. Did you mention that stormwater management would be, would qualify for twenty nineteen sales tax money?
It was.
Do we have a reading on that?
I've gotten a reading from, um, actually Dirk prior to his departure was that that was accepted.
So why wouldn't you put that into the plan now?
Because it has been handled separately in the past, but certainly haven't been to last. Stormwater maintenance, um, included in street operations activities. We're certainly moving in that direction. It moves. No reason to keep that.
I'm looking at Jose. Because, because we have a separate item, that costs for about, what, nine hundred thousand dollars a year? But a proposed fund balance, if nothing else changed, of up to five million. Am I solving a problem for you?
Uh, you know, I, I think when we look at these retreats, you're not going to solve anything.
No.
But you're definitely giving input, and I'm sure every council should. And, you know, there's options here, kind of right now, it's got four that are saying option B. And remember, that helps us as we look at coming back to council. Here's what we're looking at, that's what we know where the priorities are at, and it helps us redefine our plans.
You made that five.
Make that five. Okay.
So can I, can I ask council, just to, for clarification, because I just spoke with one opinion? Is there support for having something that comes back? We've already talked about raising possibly the alleys, but also trying to solve the stormwater drainage problem by incorporating it from our legal reading into some of this planning?
Is there another option when we get there? We haven't even talked about it, so I don't know what is coming up. There's other options.
Okay.
And I want to see all of that. Yeah. At this point, I would rather see adding the signals and controllers back in, bridge repairs back in.
Alley.
Sidewalk districts and alleys.
Yeah.
Before I did stormwater management, because I really think that the commitment to the community had to do with all of those kinds of things. And it, bridge repairs makes me nervous. Those are the deals. So I would rather see some things added back in that were cut in option B, and then see where the fund balance.
And we're like taking photos, Tom, and like showing everyone how we're doing, we're doing all these repairs and how beautiful our town is.
Two thousand.
Yeah.
All over. Okay, good. Because I think that'll be super important at the end of it. Yep. To show what we've done.
And I'm excited to say that starting this summer, the projects, not just streets, but all of the CIP projects, will have a sign that says funded by your tax dollars or your grant or whatever it was.
Yeah. So I'd like to say councillor Baxter shared her opinion, I've shared one, they're not necessarily in, in same. I do support this, and we had a good consideration around this. I think what I'm hearing. Yeah. Okay. Yeah, I thought we, I think. Yeah. Councillor Balsam, we have consensus, complete consensus on B. So what you're going to come back to us eventually is what it might look like revised. And we still haven't talked about stormwater management, whether some other things would be ended in or how that would be funded and funded. And, and, but your also point is, is that is also an essential part of streets. Because when, when everything's backing up from the sewer, from the sewer drainage, it's a problem.
I think I heard Jessica, if I'm wrong about this, I don't know, but I think I heard you say you supported adding things like bridges and sidewalks back in if you could.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
How about you, Melissa?
Yes, definitely. Excellent. Thank you.
I think most cities have found, to your earlier point, that trying to finance, um, major capital projects related to streets, really it's tough to finance a general fund, even if you pull some things out just because of the price tag. So they've had to figure out how to pursue, whether it's federal or state money or bonded or financed, or just through different mechanisms. Because if they're trying to do. After the general fund, they, they're, they're constant. I think a lot of cities do their street maintenance out of their general fund, but major projects are more, are funded differently through different mechanisms.
Right, but a good portion of this is day-to-day maintenance.
Right.
So, and we're, we're relying on dedicated sales tax to take care of the maintenance of a basic service.
Yeah, unfortunately, I think historically, most cities have left, uh, maintenance to the streets as the first thing that gets cut off.
Right.
And then all it does is pay now, I mean, we've all seen that. And then when you get back into it now, is it more expensive that you, as soon as you fix it, you just never, you're never caught up, so to speak. You talked earlier about annexation and stuff, you know, a lot of cities, a lot of stories there about what streets you accept and the condition. Yeah, all those different things about what you're accepting, what you're doing, county roads, city roads. And it gets all mixed, kind of a mixing and matching. But I think just trying to figure out how to finance that dedicated funding sources, lots of cities, I think that's, just because they would move super fast.
But, but Patrick, I would also say that it comes down to political will of determining it. And most, and I don't necessarily want to fall into camp of most cities.
Right.
Because they've taken a different route than actually funding essential services.
Well, I think it's the competition for priorities, you're absolutely right. Some things are public facing, we all understand streets. They just, I don't know, I'm not sure people process it outside this room about the, the expense that it requires to maintain the infrastructure. And, um, people, we all take it for granted until it's not there. And then we go, well, who's paying for that? How's that going to happen? So you're right, it's how do you reconcile that with competition for priorities? And that's what you're doing all the time, policies, just trying to figure that out.
So my question of Jose is, when is it realistic to see a revised Plan B, um, with revised fund balances?
I don't have ETA for your pair.
I'm just curious because.
Could have those Monday.
Oh, I'm not asking for that, but I'm just thinking from a council, from following up from this retreat, when might we, might be a reasonable timeframe for this?
What I'd like to do is let us finish the retreat, let us have a chance to see everything. Because one of the parts is, is one area may affect the other area, that may affect the other area. So I don't want to rush and get one part out, and then it has a backwards effect on something else that we had no idea on. So, uh, we're taking notes, we'll get through it, and then we'll come back to the council with what we heard, kind of a final report, some of the next steps that we're looking at. But I wouldn't like to wait till after we're finished with the retreat.
Perfect. That's great.
Anything else about streets? It sounds like consensus is about option B. Sorry. And then, and so here we are at this stage, in this discussion, the other three items, obviously, two votes. So there's, and there's not a majority of council that wants to see, at least when you have to vote on that prioritization process, there's not a majority of council that's seen those three items, any of those three items as moving forward. I'd say they lack merit, but as far as investing financial resources or staff time, we can come back to that option. So we just thought we'd pause here and have a conversation about those three items, and see what the council and Jose's input is about moving forward. Just trying to make sure we don't, we're challenging assumptions, not just keep going through this process, just to go through it. Since those three, there was a distinctive drop-off between the top two and then these sort of final three. Any thoughts about that?
For me, it was like the, like for housing and the new facility, we have, we don't, we didn't have a, a funding source for it. We had never done anything. And so, like, I felt like we had to make those changes in order to have some distinct, like, where does council want to go with those two? The other three are so important. I, in my, we have to fund them in some capacity or have a plan. Like, I don't want to not talk about them.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, we're just taking, taking the temperature, just trying to say.
Yeah. Olivia, you were going to say something, I saw you starting.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry. I, um, all these priorities are priorities. So for me, as I mentioned yesterday, they're all priorities.
Just thought we'd take the temperature before we do this. So with that being said, uh, all three having two, um, in what order would the council like to go through or?
Well, I was going to say an easy one for me, as in one of the reasons why it didn't hit my pillow was because, um, parks and recs has to two thousand five and two thousand.
They're just going to grab Tommy's batteries low.
Two thousand five and two thousand fifteen sales tax. General fund. And to your point, Patrick, if we are going to do facilities with, uh, with the two thousand five re-up, maybe that's what we also use the counterpart to that is the rec.
Yeah, and, and I'd like to say all, we made, we do have a dedicated sales tax board, parks and recreation that goes to twenty twenty, twenty thirty five, at four point four to five million, so I want to point that out. So I'd like to see how we fund, uh, the transit. Right, right, I understand that. But I'd like to, I'd like to see how we fund transit and. And then what is available for our parks and recs. But, you know, I'm not saying they're not important, but one's got five million coming in. and then what is available for our parks and rec, but, you know, I'm not saying they're not important, but one's got five million coming in between a pod. It's not just Parks and Rec, it's Parks and Rec all over the world, but there's a pot of money coming in for the next twenty thirty-five. Then I'd like to see. So for me, how to fund that is probably my next priority, getting that, taking care of all those three.
And you do your point, so, you know, we funded Parks and Rec since nineteen seventy-nine, it's had a tune of over a hundred and sixty million dollars. And um, you know, I, it's, it's an interesting conversation, if we even split that, that two thousand five into fourth, first, on that side, whether we have, and part of it went to transportation, part of it went to Parks and Rec. And then we sat down with the border county commissioners about do, finding the outside of the city transportation challenges through the joint sales.
And let me just do a presentation just before. Yeah.
So we're going to go through all three of them, have those conversations, and help take their orders.
Okay.
So that's.
Well, street is the last, so I'm going to back up to whatever. It's a stormwater option A, this has the amount that council saw yesterday. General fund down here has a certain amount of consensus net. We saw today that, you know, it appears that that could be a different scenario, but there's not a dedicated funding for stormwater, so that's the, the piece there. Allison talked yesterday about the potential for a stormwater utility. I believe that would be wiped away as a bill levy, property taxes, road impact fees, and looking at those options there for changing some of those, and then stormwater. And so this was the option A, it's just showing again that if the general fund was to continue, so that has that piece in it there across. And so that's the, the option A. Moving into option B, so it's really taking fifty percent of option A. And Allison has there, there's the option, would have to pick and choose projects, or save up over multiple, some of those larger projects, which would also require reauthorization every year by every council during the budget process. So again, the potential funding options don't change here, other than listed in twenty nineteen streets. What that would look like if there were the, the revenue expenditures, just showing that through. I think again to, and this may be a little bit different, we discussed yesterday that there's catch-up needed there, so I don't know if this would necessarily need to go out that far, but the forecast and some, some numbers are for you all. And then option C, really is kind of a zero to unknown. Forecasted expenditures in there, and then there's just really no dedicated funding year to year. And what this is basing it off of is that two hundred dollars, or we do have a stormwater fund, that gathers two hundred dollars a year. And so just, that, that is a kind of the option there, so um, I can pause on that stormwater, how is it, if you just want to add anything?
The only thing I would add is that we are due to give a presentation to council from a consultant who has put together our proposed CIP plan for, for the next five years in stormwater construction, and has proposed several different funding sources for us to consider.
Allison?
Yes.
If you look at option B, do you think you could, and get started at fifty percent and use grants to get you to seventy-five or a hundred percent of your goal? Because some of those would require a matching fund.
Right.
So that would be looking at getting an equal amount of money in, a, a goal of an equal amount of money in grants.
To make up the difference to be at the ideal.
Or if to be at thirty-three percent, or whatever you could, you could patch together.
Seems, you know, it's certainly, I think, something that we should look into before we decide not to do it.
Right, yeah.
That we should rule out all grant possibilities before looking for internal funding or sales tax or anything like that. So I would, I think that's a logical approach to take.
The other thing you didn't get to finish, what's, it's a little bit unfortunate, because we don't have phase three completed. And as we all may have waited it differently, had we known that amount, what is the document, you know, what is the funding requirement? And over what period of time, and priorities around it? So that's a little bit unfortunate for this discussion, but um, you think, so it couldn't change it. But what, what were some of the funding options that they were going to suggest?
Well, the stormwater, you, um, I want to say it's probably three or four months ago, they did come and, and talk to you, a study session, that is stormwater utility, potential stormwater tax, but grants. They got me into more detail on some of the grants that we may be eligible for. So following up on those, to me, is the next step. A lot of what the consultant recommended tentatively would require taxpayer buy-in. I think, and obviously, when I'm going to get a utility or tax or anything like that without really a concerted campaign effort to make that happen, and that's not a year or two-year project to make that.
And do you have the manpower to get the grants submitted?
Almost, recently I hired a, excuse me, public works project manager, who has an engineering background, who is getting up to speed, he's been there a month, so he's got quite a, quite a bit ahead of him to take in, he's still in the firehose stage. I think with his assistance, that we'll be able to start getting the applications in. I can, I'm successful at writing the grant proposal, but doing all the documentation needed for financial, those, writing all those pieces, he'll be a great support on those, so I, we're getting a lot closer to that than we have in the past for all of public works.
I have a question, so are road impact fees assessed on new construction?
I'm saying yes.
So, on new construction?
Yeah.
So the challenge for me is that most of our stormwater management issues are not in areas that would have new construction. They're in older parts of the town, for example, and I, I, I would not, I think it would be a real challenge to say, oh, new construction has to pay for what we didn't do way back when. So I'm, I'm a little challenged by the road impact fee being used for stormwater management costs.
I support option B as well, with the option to, to look into the grants, and if there is anything urgent that comes up, we can always appropriate for that specific purpose.
I'm coming specifically, if something.
I look forward to seeing. The, the presentation or the consultant will present it.
Uh, yes, I don't have an exact date, I will get that and report to you. I know your study session is busy right now, but um.
So that will give you better insight, so I think that would be good to.
So, Olivia, do you see that coming, those expenditure, those revenues coming from either the twenty nineteen streets or the general fund or some other source?
Can you go back to the priorship?
Besides the grants, I mean, the grants would be supplemental.
I think we have, is that, is there any fund balance in this account? You said they have two hundred thousand?
So historically, well, we've, in new and in stormwater, it's.
Two hundred dollars.
That's why I said it's not even a deal.
So we've been tracing from the general fund on a year-to-year basis, regarding stormwater projects. That's why you're seeing the revenue and the expenditure, but yes, the stormwater fund is like about two hundred dollars a year, we have an eight thousand dollar fund balance.
So we have eight hundred thousand dollars.
Eight thousand.
Eight thousand.
Eight thousand.
You're going to have a presentation on this, or this, it sounds like, at least at this point, it's option B? Would that be subject to revision, if you looked at your options, that you can hear from the consultant, your funding options?
Yeah.
Transportation.
So we're going to go back to the board, basically, the streets. So we've got transportation, option A. Here, this is about, so, answer questions, this is about council side of state. It's related to the three point seven annually with some of those revenues. The forecasted expenditures includes those extended expansion routes. With two million dollars in implementation of the ADA plan over ten years, three hundred thousand in maintenance, shock replacement, so that has that gap of the five point two million. So potential funding options, train the capital grant, private partnerships, sales tax, and new fees. So this is the, the same information that council saw yesterday with those current revenue sources, the operating expenditures with the expansion, the capital expenses to fleet, and the capital expenses to the facilities. You can see that kind of growing unbalanced deficit here, so this is the option A for transit. Keep moving on to option B, so option B forecast revenues still at that same three point seven. Transit expenditures at six point seven with the expansion, and so then approximately three million dollars annually in a gap. And so again, same central funding options. Sarah, do you want to talk about the changes to this one, of the point of the capital?
Yeah, so the, the main change between option A and B is that we've taken out a timeframe associated with the implementation of ADA transition plan projects, which all those, all the transit facilities, product, AD, clients, and how we're going to the two thousand fifteen absent sales tax, that obviously puts a little bit of stress on the fifteen. And then also the fleet, rolling stock and electrification, it's all out of option B. And then just one other point that I would make is, you know, we have, in our public processes, the three priorities of out for transit service for the community are in order, frequency of service, hours, and those are both the city limits, and then the service expansion beyond the county. So we do have flexibility, even with an option B of tweaking, you know, what that expansion would look like.
Sarah, do you have any estimate of what the outside of the city limits expansion cost is? Is it two million a year, five million?
And, you know, really, that'd be variable based on if we got, for instance, we're kind of having some temperature check conversations with the purgatory about how much they would want to bring to the table in order to get transit service up there. You know, it really depends on.
Well, if you did it the backwards way, if you, if you just assessed what inside the city limits was, because you should have those numbers for that expansion, then you'd know what the outside was forecasted.
Yeah.
What you were expecting.
Yeah, so we, I would, I would expect based on our estimates right now, that the, the vision of increased service hours and the city would.
And so then outside would be.
About another, and that's based on service cost and then vision staffing and vision.
So if we were, if we were going to talk to the border county commissioners about funding transit outside of the city, it would be about one, one.
One point one million.
And how much?
No.
Once we have, you know, once we have the, we have drivers, buses, all those things, bases, and developing the service, and that's.
Right, except that now you have more depreciation and more maintenance costs, because you're driving more mileage, and so there, I, I can see how you could easily add maybe fifteen percent to that.
And that's operating costs, I guess I should point out, because we're not talking about the transit shelters and stocks that allow, or all those processes are stopped.
And. Yeah, and then again, then your, your, that discussion puts the joint sales tax into a continuous operating funding mode rather than capital. Yeah, I know. What, what did it cost you to take out the electrification?
Three hundred thousand annually, and that's, I haven't split that from the rolling stock replacement, because you don't have the final thoroughbred transition plan yet, so I don't know what those, that's just a estimate at this point.
So, so like, so three hundred thousand, but that would get us towards some of our sustainability goals, correct?
Well, I would really like to talk to the border county commissioners about funding some, some of the transportation, and some of the shit that's funded outside of the city, for example, but also because we're managing that whole system, we'd probably be managing it, there would need to be some also support for operational, what it takes to all the red tape, to, it takes to make it run and all of that, so it, it could end up being more than one point one million dollars, so we end up having that conversation about too.
I'd like to suggest, and councillor, I'll go around, but you, the opportunity fund might be an option down the road, as you look at it, for say, a big one-time investment in electrification of some of the fruit. You know, I mean, it might be something, if you're talking three hundred a year, what could you do with a million and a half in a one-shot opportunity, and that helps us with our sustainability goals, it might qualify for other matching monies.
And I would say the electrification is probably the least of my concerns for funding, because so many grants are available for electrification.
All right.
And, and those pay out at about eighty twenty, so you know, the cost of the city is, is less for the electrification than for, you know, what we, to be operating.
So what about, like, further thought into this, about how we might structure this, you know, in agreement with, not in agreement, but a partnership with the county or something like that? Does council have?
I'm playing, talking about, like, with the county at some point in the future, about, as we, as we look at, like, Perg and that, but that's not really, I'm more worried about the extended hours, the ADAs, stuff, like, I'm more concerned about, like, those things not happening and getting done versus Perg and that, and, and the airport, I mean, I would think it's important, and I think that, yes, it can.
What I meant though was just pulling that out of the conversation.
Sure, yeah.
We could talk about the.
Yeah. Yeah, but then, yeah, the ADA transition plan and the extended hours, I think were two of the things I was disappointed in, and I don't, I don't know how to comment. The one thing I hadn't had to go down, looking at this, is that in option C, which is not actually an option that we want, but I'm at least glad to see that we can maintain current services. For twenty twenty-seven, no expansion. Yeah, and that, you know, that is, we, there's about a six hundred thousand, I think it's a technical sign, that's my fault, it's a eight hundred thousand dollar gap. There's about a six hundred thousand dollar gap annually, where we're pulling from the transportation services enterprise fund. So we would, if we just maintain services without, and didn't buy any additional funding, we will have to look at some service reductions. Okay.
Because you're going negative.
Yeah, yeah. But I also like that in option B, that you've done, you've got the expanded service, extended hours, and we're not that negative, but some force, so we may have some time possibly to, I mean, I'm, I'm glad to see that, at least in option B. And like I said, you know, we, there's, there's room to kind of close the gap in the cost of that service expansion, and we just focus on city limits and frequency and service hours, then that addresses, you know, our city residents. Right, and then, and then communicate with the county on the other.
Well, the other way to get some, like, maybe one point ten five million, one point five million into the transportation would be to look at the two thousand five tax, and, and do fifty percent of the facilities, and twenty-five percent for Parks and Rec, and twenty-five percent for the transportation, and maybe make that a, you know, a time limited situation also.
What about the overcollect, no, overcollect, I'm sorry, that's the wrong word, what about the fund balance that's collected in the water's tax?
She's got that added into her. She's got that added into her.
That would mean we'd have.
Yeah, we'd have to go to, I know, ballot.
Right, which is great, another ballot.
Yeah.
Vote again! So, actually, Jessica, you're brilliant.
Oh, thanks, tell all your friends.
One of the things I've been thinking about, and I talked with Sarah and Jose about this too, is if we did reallocate the lodgers tax. And we made sure that we were picking up the hotel guests that are outside of downtown. So that they didn't have to drive their cars into town, it would alleviate traffic issues, it would alleviate parking issues. And if we added park and rides, bike at the. That could be all part of that, so people, for me, for the MasTech employees who work in the retail and hospitality industry, wouldn't have to drive all the way into town either. And so I, that's a really good point.
So can I ask, um, to that? Is it, first of all, I'm assuming, I'm glad to hear that you're not worried about electrification, you'll be still holding to your goals and doing that then. But I was wondering about the ADA, because that always gets on the back of. Push back, push back, and it's 20 million over 10 years, if I remember correctly. Would you? A and the airport into a plan B? And then possibly fund it through, you know, to come up with a funding source, whether it's the lodgers tax, some of the allocation of that. What would that take, some of the, so that we're making progress on the ADA, we're going to have the 2 million grant, but then it will go five years where we do nothing. So kind of figure out how we can become more inclusive in the community and address those needs.
We have like heaters in the shelters when I was waiting for the bus.
Yeah.
It was free all over town.
Yeah, the ski resort pays for that.
I know.
So the question is a B, maybe it's a B plus, something like that.
Yeah.
I don't know how people feel about that, but, but your idea of the, of the. That then of course is dependent upon taking it to a ballot and.
I know. But, okay, so we, so we're at C and it can maintain, we want B, you know, the council wants that, we can like work towards. Yeah, like work towards it, if there's something that we need, we have the opportunity fund, a little bit of money, I don't know. Rain them in, Jose's like, rain them in, they're just going on and on and on.
Getting here because this is where we're starting to get into the tough decisions with big dollars and that level A, B, and C. And this is kind of being more between that B and C and where do you want staff to find out where that target is and begin, you know, seeing what funding plans are available. With the backdrop that we won't be able to fund everything.
Yes.
And, and option C is still 600K in the hole annually.
Yeah.
So how are we even going to find option C? And then is that where the lodger's tax comes in? Well, council determination.
Remember, you're, you're giving director, you're designing the house today, you're not trying to construct the house. So this is not the last conversation about any of these items. You're trying to create some level of consensus and shared understanding that staff can hear, that they can then go back and start to build the house they bring back to you before you even start to build. So we're trying to stay away from project planning and try to still stay conceptual level and not mix A, B, and C before we get out of B. I think that's what Jose's point was, so we're not saying you have to slide land on B or C, but then we are saying, you need to at least identify which of those you feel as though that staff needs to spend some time on to bring back to you for the distribution.
But I do want to point out the nexus of housing and transportation.
Right.
You know, we can't be doing all this great housing work if we're also not addressing the transportation to get to those places.
Well, tourism and transportation.
And we can't, and we can't, exactly, more than that nexus. And so that also in some ways says we can't just do the status quo because we're going to be building all these other units. We've got to get people taking public transportation.
That is why I was happy to see in option B, so that we were able to get to the expanded. Which I really have to see that because in the past, we've had lots of conversation around our decrease in grants, um, funding from the state and the impact that it was going to have on our service. I'm glad to see we can actually even maintain it at this level and even, even have the conversation of extending hours to 2024. To me, that actually feels right compared to what are some of our conversations have been with the redistribution of transit. And so I like myself this option B because it gets us to, um, an increase, I liked that increase highways, I definitely wanted it to be the most. And, and I think we can get there, it feels like we can get there. And then, you know, in a, in a level of priority for me, as was voted on by the council, this had to. And so this can be addressed at a future date even further.
Right.
But at least we're talking about extending service, I think that's great.
Yeah, $3 million gap.
That's good news though, to me.
So it sounds like the. Sorry, the council is option B for transportation. Right, but again, the story is not finished on any of these.
I will ask just for what's within the wheelhouse that you would like us to look at as sources, not deciding, but things that we would. I mean, one of the things I think on this one would have to look at a lodger's tax reallocation, is that okay to?
Absolutely. Yes.
No, okay, there's a, we wouldn't be wasting time looking into that if there was no, anywhere near that council would be considering.
And I would look at the 2005 sales tax.
What does the council feel on that?
I would also look at that. I liked the plan of action that you have already laid out for 2005 myself.
What was that?
For the office of the staff.
I would start with lodger's tax.
I'm sorry.
I said, I would start with lodger's tax.
You didn't, you mentioned public-private partnerships, what is for funding sources?
Just options that we can look at. I think there's, there's partnerships that are out there that I, I think they would help, but I'm not sure there's going to be anything that's going to close it.
Right, I didn't know that because I wasn't sure. And then new fees, like, like parking fees, is that, is that incorporated in here, the potential for that?
No, I think they're pretty nominal fees that have been recommended. And when we. Those out, you guys gave me, uh, to look into some of those a little further, and then I'm not.
What?
So, so.
Well, I would support looking at the 2005, you didn't.
I, I'd like to make a point, I'm, I'm, you know, so that, right now, if I understand this, okay, there's, the lodger's tax has 2 million, some change. And it's going to increase by 600,000 every year, that was the difference. 24, you're going to use up all of the fund balance in the transportation and be in the negative. So there is some urgency to figure out how to fund this, is my point. So it would, if, without starting to go seriously into the hole, or, and because it's an enterprise fund, the city can only contribute 10% toward the funding. Those are the things we have to think about. So that, that puts a little urgency on this, if we're going to go with plan B.
I, um, I agree with Olivier on the lodger's taxes first. Could we, might there be other to get us through 2024 funding and opportunity?
There's going to be options, but I think the, the part of this, this is kind of where it's a struggle, is we can't fund everything.
Right.
And so that's the, that's the first part, like everything can't be the A, because I, I won't, it's just impossible. We've already said that we're not going to get there. B even shows us at a pretty significant deficit. And right now I've got the, you know, the ability to go ahead and take a look at lodger's tax reallocation, we can see what that looks like. And remember, as Patrick said, we're going to architect the house. So we've got some parts in here, we'll probably, we'll get them coming back and saying, here's what we think we can do. There may still be a gap, there may not be a gap, we may have other parts to go into it.
So until you bring that back to us, will we be in a C? Will we be, be a plan C, we're staying in plan C for a while then.
Well, there's still an $800,000 a year deficit even in finance.
Well, right, but we're not in the negative, we're until 2027 or whatever. So my thought is, plan C until, and we can fund it. Because we're not doing something we can't fund or don't have a plan for, that's irresponsible. And so like come back to us with the lodger's tax reallocation, let's see how that looks like.
It would pass.
And then if it passes, then we can move up to plan B, that's what I think. It makes sense because we don't have the money. And so if, uh, if there's portion, you know, if, if, if we can continue the discussion, then, then look and. Lodger's tax reallocation, and we can continue that discussion to get us out of, to get us to improve service.
When are you thinking that would occur? The lodger's tax reallocation?
2023, November, that's coming up.
What, what do you think? That would occur?
I guess it depends on our plan of action, the way we're going to set it.
The challenge here, the opportunity here is that you're looking at things in isolation, so you're really examining, giving it extra, which is wonderful, right? The challenge is, as Jose said a few times, you're also looking at funding without recognizing how many times you go to that same fund to pull money out, right? So once you get the whole sort of cadre again to you with more, more definition around the financial resources of pulling money out, then it gives you a better sense about, um, what those options are going to be. Remember, you can do just about anything, it's hard to do everything.
But I, I actually agree with Jessica Buhl as well as, uh, Congressman Dusse. And maybe it's time for, say, just staff to come back to us with what the numbers are, and then we can see.
So let me just take the pulse here, are you at option B, option C, option B? So you want staff to look at the reallocation of the lodger's tax as a, as a funding source to get us to B?
To get us to B, but for right now, we're at C, we can't go to B until we have.
That will be the driving factor for options.
Yeah.
But there's not enough money in the lodger's tax.
To do that. If you look at the overage.
That won't carry it through.
We're looking at a $3 million gap with option B.
Option B is 3 millions, the most we have right now, if you go back to that lodger's tax number, where was that? It was 2.4, it's going to grow by 600 a year, you guys said. If we have 2.4, and all of that were used for, and I think we allocated some of that already, didn't we?
When we did. No, we can't allocate it, that's for marketing. So right now, this is all earmarked for marketing that we have to use it for, and so we can't use that. But the gap right there in revenue and operating expenses is only 700,000.
That's option C.
Oh, yeah.
Sorry.
Yeah.
Here we are, okay.
But that is option C, so.
Yeah, yeah.
That would be fine.
Option B is 300,000.
You can only pay so much within enterprise.
I think our goal though, if we can figure out a way, is to extend services, to your point, it was like, how do we do that? And that would require the $3 million. So we can look at what could we be, what could the lodger's tax provide, and then what's the deficit in there, and then have a further conversation about where that deficit.
I'm afraid it won't.
Well, at least we'll know, you know, yeah, you'll be able to have a, an informed conversation about it.
So I would like to also say that I don't think we're going to reach the decision necessarily on the 2005 right now, because it's not even going to come up till 2026 or whenever it is. So I also want to not, you know, I mean, those are potential sources, but a lot can change between that time period. So I, I want to say that, I mean, here's some options of what you could do. But that went back to Jessica's point, that's a ways away, uh, and there could be something catastrophic that happens that we have to deal with something else, you know.
Yeah, I think you have to go to ballot at, at the latest in 2025. Going to ballot for the first time in 2026 would be really challenging, so it's actually not that far ahead of us.
It's not, I guess that's good, for the parks and rec reallocation, it's a five years ahead of that. Because we were planning on having to do it maybe three times, you never know.
Yeah.
So for me, um, I guess we're at where we're at, the C. And being able to say, if we use this, this is why we need to change the lodger's tax allocation and use it for these purposes, and this is what you can get. I think that's the best you can do is immediately take that to the, the public and say, we've thought it through, and, um, this is a trade-off. And are you willing to make this trade-off?
Obviously, this, there's a lot of announced here, different options, different funding mechanisms, it sounds like you're.
And I'd also say that I, I think it may be for future councils to determine is transportation a public good?
Well, I think we also, also recorded having a conversation with the Board, not that this applies to funding for the option B, because it's beyond option B.
Yeah.
But to have a conversation with Port County Commissioners about outside of some funding for transportation.
And.
I just don't want to lose that.
Well, something that I mentioned yesterday, and Jose brought it for us today. You're always in the car addressing. You're just not always driving the car, you have capacity limits, you have capability limits. Jose mentioned about public-private partnership and about transit. Some of those solutions that you're going to provide to address some of these issues can't be, the city is the sole provider, it's how do you enlist other partners to address it? Housing, they talked about that, how do you work with, and that is definitely trending, a lot of cities are figuring out how to partner with nonprofits to do that, they become the face. You're, you, cities are becoming the financier, but they're not necessarily the operator. Other things that you talk about, streets, uh, you're the face of that, you own those streets, you're going to do that. Transit, cities are trying to figure that out, is it the district? Is it some other partner, is it partnering with the counties? So I think you have different, not only funding mechanisms, you also have different partners that bring different money to the table as well, to address the community issue. But I think just getting more comfortable with that, you don't control all the variables, but then again, um, you bring up more resources there to address that community issue, which I think helps.
And that brings up a really good point about accounting my transportation district. You know, that's another conversation that councils in the future might want to have, is because it's not sustainable, how do we make it sustainable?
And so the next one.
So next, this is the Parks and Volcans, um, in here included, you can do the option C. And so, um, with that, and that's due to there being a budgetary funding plan, um, with the exception of 2035, the Parks Master Plan, so those will be unfunded. And so. Kind of running off the mission, we have to reauthorize all of 2005, um, Parks and Volcans. And so, this is kind of part of that subset of parks and also transportation, a little bit of open hold upon it. So this is the, the same information that was shared yesterday, um, and if, Sarah, I don't want to add anything additional.
This is the 2015, you said?
Yep.
Well, without being too provocative. Um, I'll, I'll, I'll just say that, yeah, there is a, you know, if you look at the Postmaster Plan, at the end, uh, we have a, a funding deficit. Of course, we're not going to fund everything that has there. But there are some, some bigger projects that I know there has been community conversation about. It won't be unfunded, including, you know, Road of the Great, and Park, potentially, you know, linking it year-round, Icene over the Chataill. Smart 160 West is currently unfunded. So just trying to highlight some of those things that, um, that we're not really involved in. In addition, um, we are taking care of quite a few of our maintenance items in our capital prop, um, plan. And including like the Ammister Trail, that we kind of obviously need to work better, and that's the $5 million over the next two years, um, that's kind of going towards maintenance. So we start looking at taking away some of those by funding, we're going to have to dip in 15 funding for more maintenance. Just kind of pushing back some of those other projects, so.
So.
That's kind of what.
So you receive about 2.5 million right now in 2005 funding. If the 2015 tax were paying that, you would still be, have a growing fund balance in the 2015 fund. Including those, the new capital expenditures that you've already allocated, like the River Trail and things like that. So what we're doing here is, yes, I know there's those big things at the end, which, you know, many of them might be done in a different manner, bonding or what have you. You're still not reducing, your, your, your fund balance is still increasing every single year, even if you didn't have the $2,005. And that's, that's why I'm kind of like, well, there's an opening there then in the 2005 to do something with that 2.53 million dollars a year that isn't Parks and Rec. Because you have a fund balance that's growing that's bigger than that in the 2015.
If you go to 2005, option C, if we take away that funding, we're going to start growing into a deficit, um, years out because of, we're, we're doing some maintenance expenditures. And these aren't large maintenance expenditures, these are just maintenance expenditures to do airline transfers to support operations. And these aren't large maintenance expenditures. These are just maintenance expenditures to do airline transfers to support operations.
And there's still plenty of money in the fund balance in 2015 to resort to that and the 2.5 million dollars. If you go back, you're looking at $16 million in 2030. And 11 million before that, and then 19 million. So even if you take that, even if you're generous and say it's $2 million in maintenance expenses, the 2.5 million dollars from 2005, that's $4.5 million. You're still, you're still have a $10 million fund balance in 2030.
I have a little question.
Yeah.
To, I, out of, I can't remember if I asked yesterday, I believe, but on the capital projects, for example, the wish list was 330 million, something in that order. Like, how much did you include in this forecast till 2035?
How much of that is included from the Eastern Master Plan? Probably maybe about half of it.
Half of it.
I know that Durango Mesa Park level is, you know, the poster master plan is $100 million.
Right. So you have $108 million sitting over there in 2035.
Which doesn't include Durango Mesa Park.
Right, exactly.
Right. But that could be bonded. I mean, those are huge.
And that's how opposed to go and out project by project and have bonding. I think that's inappropriate, not that I'm doing it. And that could be a new tax, I'm sure. But we're also wanting to make sure, because I've been here, and we're not taking care of what we got. And we just continue to fund that.
Right. But you're increasing your fund balance every single year, and that's problematic for me. When you're saying that there's all these things you need to be doing, but your fund balance is going up every single year.
And, you know, if you look at Parks and Recreation, you have quite a few projects in there that I won't jump in there too big. We're just multimodals in there too, and they're only funding that $2 million a year going out. So I think there's some expenditures in that as well.
Well, go ahead.
You still have your $10 million fund balance.
I know. I agree. And I, I'm wondering, I'm wondering if you actually think that there will be a $19 million fund balance at some point? Do you actually think that there will be, or do you think that you guys didn't account for it? Yeah. So that's instead of like badgering you over the spreadsheet, which clearly was, you know, we've had a couple of little errors, no big deal. Like, typically, has your fund balance been more than $2 million, $1 million in Parks and Rec?
Yes.
You carry some fund balance, but it's, you know, if we wanted to do a project, we could do a lot of projects.
And this year it's only at $795,000, or going to be.
Correct.
Okay.
So Terry, that's because council gave direction to do that, to reduce the fund balance and actually spend the money on the projects happening.
So how about, can I, please? How about, let's take a look at this again and maybe let's, like, look at the multimodal expenditures realistically and maybe some of the capital realistically and see where that fund balance actually looks because we don't want it to be $20 million. That definitely, that would help. I think that that, I would like to see more information and more comprehensive.
Terry, to build on what Jessica just said, we're going to be in a position similar to the water fund balance. And you know the uproar that's happened over that. Why are we, do we have that much money? And should we not be bonding then for some of these things so that the debt is, it's paid out? So what I do want to say is when you look at those two things, to Kim's point, you can take care of the Parks and Rec at the parks, the maintenance of that, out of this fund. And so I, I know everybody, you know, all we, I don't think we're minimizing Parks and Rec. I think we're holding you to come to us when it's appropriate for bonding. But to get to a $16 million fund balance, that looks a lot like the water fund. Particularly when we're saying that we're going to keep transportation at the status quo and we're going to put this much money in the bank elsewhere? I have a problem with that.
If I can, because I want to talk with Sarah in just a bit. I know we got these numbers from Devin, but in the multimodal expenditures, it does look pretty light. In 2026, 27, that's two years, that's only 350,000.
Right.
2029, you only have 385,000. Are those things that, there are projects that may be multimodal projects because I think that's going to obviously have an impact on the fund balance. So I want to make sure from a multimodal perspective in your area, the lodger, the reasoning behind some of these lower numbers compared to these years that we have up here at the beginning.
Yeah, thank you. We have, we have, you know, the first five years, that's the CIP is kind of approved by the advisory board and based on staff capacity up to that point. So it's generally about a project or two a year designed for construction. That's not reflective of the, you know, number of projects or needs that we can have. And it is kind of a product also balanced budget every year with the Parks and Rec projects as well.
Right. And I'll say that too. And when we look at these, our CIP is a five-year snapshot. What we did is we tried to, as best as possible, lay out all of the projects and the courses of the sales of these taxes. So, you know, when you get out for, yeah, maybe we could do something different.
So the, but the last thing I want to see happen is a bunch of projects thrown in so that the fund balance goes to zero. Because these are what you are giving us now as, as what you really see as option A. And if, if in reality you needed more projects happening, I, I really believe you should have brought that out to us in the beginning. So, and if all you're doing is putting in 16 or 19 million dollars worth of projects down the road just so that there's a zero fund balance, I don't think that's a very good way to manage the process.
Can I make a little comment or question? And I think when you did the five-year projection, you were using the, the lower sales tax numbers because they were not updated yet at that time. Is it correct?
We were, we use the sales tax numbers that are given to us.
Yeah. So, and that capital projects process took place in, just trying to think, is that July or when did that start? So, so where I'm going to is that I think you do a good job in matching your capital projects to at the point when you're making that discussion, what you estimate as the revenues and the sales tax. And obviously, the numbers were a lot more positive on the sales tax. There was more revenue, there's more fund balance. But I think at the time that you made that forecast, you were working with what you had. On both Parks and Rec and Volcanals.
And I'd like to add that the general fund puts in money into Parks and Recreation. You know the numbers better than I do.
$9 million out of the general fund have been where, and the general fund is also funding all parks, maintenance on parks, building in 2018.
So you've got the general fund paying for this portion, and you've got a fund balance that's growing. And then there are other things that are not being paid for out of the general fund. And so I'd like to suggest that maybe a reworking of all of this, that includes how you could take care of your maintenance, get the priority projects done.
Because if you could reduce the general fund $9 million by doing some of that work out of the 2015, that means the general fund would have more money that they could bid towards something else, whether it be transportation or streets or whatever. You know, that, that's the way you kind of have to look at it too is, and from when we were first on council, the general fund was only six, it was only $6 million paying for Parks and Rec, and that's kind of up to $9 million. So that's a $3 million increase in three and a half years.
What I'm seeing is, is that the way I feel like we're doing our work is that we're prioritizing just a few years out of the projects and working with our advisory board on prioritization of those projects. And so I can't remember what we said, what it is, capital plan. But it just went on a few years and then, and it prioritized that. And then it was just kind of a large number because we hadn't really separated it out. So I'm just assuming that by the time, you know, you get to 2026, for example, there will be, you know, more, more projects. Because certainly we have a list of high priority projects that we want to fund, the Parks and Rec. We know that it's substantial. And so I think that those will just come forward as we're able to have the capacity to do them and build them in. And so that's what I'm kind of assuming is going on with this spreadsheet, perhaps.
That's correct.
That's what I figured. And so I, I'm not anticipating that we'll see a $16 million, for example, fund balance in 2030. In fact, I don't even anticipate that we'll see a $6 million fund balance in 2026 because I know we have projects that we're going to want to fund. Gosh, I mean, Durango Mesa Park, just to name, just one huge, massive one. And so, you know, the, just the little amounts we fund to that each year can add up quickly. So I, I just throw that out for consideration. That's what I feel like is happening. Well, I, I agree. I mean, I have two kids, one for talk, or both of them have, you know, one BMX and both of those facilities. You know, we're talking about, you know, the during this park. And now that, we're a high school chastity, the regulations side, so, you know, I think that there's big things coming up. I will say the importance for Parks that gap that we're seeing where 20-something year olds are moving here and to start a family anymore. And I think about why I moved here when I was 18. You know, like, why did I come here when I was 18? Why did I stay and start my game here? And why, like, why? And it is, it is because of this. And there is so much support for it. And I think taking care of it and making sure we can is super important to me. And then, you know, making sure that we do have continually. So I think just editing this so that the numbers would be great for me.
So I need to take the pulse here, but I need to be mindful of time. You still have one more item to do. This item here, there was one option. I'll weigh in on this about where to go forward with this. Because there seems to be some disagreement about what's in there, the spreadsheets and the projects. We're not trying to fix all that today. So what do you want to do about this?
Well, I, I need to, Jessica. So, okay.
I think we also talked about coming back to the realistic budget. We all value, we all value Parks and Rec. I'm going to say that, you want to stick to things. But to have something like this in front of us is disturbing. So what I think we're going to see is a revised, and not just putting in projects, put in projects, but a revised budget that possibly reflects multimodal, that might have been cut or underfunded, and you're going to come back to us with something different. And to Kim, I don't know how to, Kim's point of the other funding that the city, I think, in, in relationship of this, that we also need to look at what the city pays to this activity out of the general fund. Because it's over and beyond. It's not just living within the tax dollars.
Well, okay, you're right. You can do that. I think that, that's part of all the money. You're putting some money from other funds to all those items.
Right. But this, this is right up there with as much as we put into the police department. There others aren't at that same level.
Right.
Or you're going to build them in a facility.
You know, I'm not saying.
We should, but I'm just saying that.
And we're going to fund it. You're doing.
But Melissa and I, and Olivier, all said that we wanted a revised spreadsheet with stuff, but we're, I, we're, I'm not nitpicking that number.
Okay. So I'm going to tie it up there as well.
Yeah, I didn't.
Go ahead.
So for me, there's a huge challenge here because Parks and Rec is intimately tied to our affordability of our community. Because the more amenities that we add, that's part of what's made our community so popular. And 20 years ago, a college student could probably afford to live here. Because even in the 90s, it was 33% of your income that was going to our housing. Now we're up at 47 or 55. I'm not even sure where, where we are. We're so high that right now, those 20-somethings are not going to be able to move here and live here anyway because they can't afford the housing. And so I'm, I, I think that Parks and Rec is awesome. I totally support it. I absolutely believe we need to maintain what we have. But it is part of what's made this town so popular and therefore so unaffordable. So for me, I, and I understand that three of you have already made the decision, but I, I want it to be heard that I believe that we need to focus on the things that will give us 50 years from now a livable, quality community where there's multi-generational, mixed income, people able to live here, even 20 years from now. Because then we can go back and start putting more money into Parks and Rec again. But until we get that balanced out, we're going to end up being the best amenity place in the nation. And we're going to be the most unaffordable place in the nation with no housing. I mean, I know we're working on the housing, but it's, it's still, there's, the pressure is so high to do that. And when you look at the number of employees in Parks and Rec, and if we do Durango Mesa Park, you're looking at the number of tourists and visitors that will come for that and the number of expansions in hospitality and retail jobs that are at the lowest end of the spectrum. Parks and Rec, like I said, I love it. It's great. But to be realistic, we have to look at the fact that it is, it is employing people who in many cases are, are less than median income, and it's creating a market for tourism that does exactly this and just exacerbates our problems. So I just, I just want to look at this from a big picture, not just from one little narrow, I love Parks and Rec and I want them to have more amenities. That's just my.
We have one more area. You did say we have one more area.
Right. So I want to move on to that. Right? So there's one option. That's what it is. So we need to get back to revise this. Our things for director. A little just seems to be a little sparse in space to say that this one actually is going to be the most difficult conversation for the council. There is different viewpoints on Parks and Recreation and how it feels. And that's not me to say that one's either right or the other one is wrong, but to know that there are a, a split in this one where there are splits in the other one. So I, I look at this as knowing that this came up, this was going to be the most difficult conversation where does the council majority feel this as a whole? And we did that probably is going not to be a unanimous decision, but a split decision. So it's kind of natural to have these conversations. My one.
Okay. So Parks Open Space and Trails, this is the option that council was presented yesterday. So again, the same revenue forecast, the same furniture forecast, which, just a quick reminder, so that's to continue the current CIP plan that has a list of projects and maintenance in there as well. And then if reauthorized, maintain the current level of funding for annual maintenance would be 1.9 for future capital projects. And so with the gap sort of the recent report assessing the Parks, Parks indicates Parks need 750,000 annually needed to maintain current Parks and Recreation facilities. And then potential funding options, a general fund or not funding new projects. And so again, this is the forecast that council saw yesterday related to Parks Open Space and Trails. Option B, so it's the same as option A. If, if reauthorized, we generate those $3 million. That's the revenues. Forecast expenditures would be to combine all maintenance and ongoing expenditures from 2005 and 2015. So about 1.7 million. Add additional expenditures to cover underfunded maintenance. So about a million, and then total would be 2.7 for years. This leaves a minimal increase in the fund balance in 2027. And then the scenario provides additional funding in the 2015 for new facilities with approximately 625,000 in 2027. So I'll possibly slower on this one, but this is the, this is an option B for this park recreation of 2005. So this does include renewing, but it looks at specifically maintenance expenditure. Would you add anything to that, Terry?
No. What I've, I've been hearing is that you need to take care of what we got. So we created this option B that, and my, and so our poster facilities. One thing to note is having the current funding also, such things with Durango Trails, we do the transfer, we do do so, so our facility. But this is really kind of that, trying to bring everything together into Parks Open Space Trails Recreation Maintenance. And then this option does not include funding land acquisitions. So that's something that we're not going to talk about. Maybe it's an opportunity funded 2018 if something comes available, we want to take care of that. To buy that, that, that.
And then option C is really using the bill tax concept since 2026. Worked out as managers maintaining the CIP plan through 2026. So lost about $3 million in post Um, so lost about three million in, uh, post, uh, uh, Parks Recreation, trails, um, on future projects, land acquisition, easements, central option there, just to do the, the general fund. Um, and so, um, see what, what that looks like of trying to, um, continue to maintain some of those maintenance expenditures on the out years. Um, we start to hit a deficit in twenty twenty-nine.
Which would be the impact, general fund or?
So, on your option A for Parks and Multimodal and option B for your post, in twenty twenty-eight, you'd have close to nine and two point four. So, between those two funds, you'd have close to eleven million dollars, is that correct? Am I looking at this correctly?
Again, when you, when you start looking out now years, it's hard because we're just really kind of doing a five-year snapshot on CIP projects. So, that can completely change in the next five years in a prioritization.
But if you, you lost three million in the two thousand and five, transport, and transportation got it, it could be a fan B. And then you would still have funding to probably take care of almost everything if you could be to bond some of the big ticket items like Mesa, which could be bonded sooner. You know, and, and there's some ways to work it out so that, so that, you know, we could do things. It's a, you know, it's a loss to maybe one department, but it's a gain for somebody else to possibly. Which is already going to run into a deficit.
There's obviously that, uh, to go out and ask for a sales tax increase to include projects specifically in line with this.
Um, is this half set or quarter?
Quarter.
Quarter, quarter. All right, it's two and a half million dollars.
I have a question, why? Because of the option B, it makes sense, I guess, to combine them. Otherwise, they would come out of each font.
Currently, we're funding out of two, five and fifteen, um, as well as general fund.
So, but by combining it, one makes more clean, I guess. And you would free up money in the general fund. But when I look at this option, you have a growing fund balance. So, you could indeed even include new capital projects and land acquisition because I think those should not be necessarily discarded that quickly.
I was going to say land acquisition, that's what I was.
It's like three hundred thousand dollars a year, you have a growing fund balance.
But that's kind of pretty successful and important thing that you need, yes?
Land acquisition is important for us. I mean, we're just mark one sixty, we just don't need to go out and purchase an easement for that to get through a piece of property. Um, so, having that available, yes, it is helpful in the category.
So, my, when I look at this, I think it makes sense to combine maintenance to clean up the organization, and it frees up money in the general fund.
Is that true, Terry? Just to make sure, because I think you're just taking the maintenance out of the five and fifteen, you're not taking the maintenance out of the general fund. So, that would still be there. The five and fifteen does put maintenance, operations and maintenance dollars into the general fund. About six hundred and fifty thousand dollars, you would provide both.
Okay, nice. Well, so it doesn't free up, but it still cleans up the structure of maintenance. Uh, and I think we could add it when the opportunity arises, land acquisition, resources. And then, uh, an easement is required or acquisition is required for certain projects. You have the option, I think that would make perfect sense.
Or a land acquisition could come from the, the opportunity fund. I mean, rather than putting aside four hundred thousand a year or whatever.
We are tearing into that opportunity fund.
Yeah, I know, but my point is, but part of my point is, is we purchased a lot of land. And so, I mean, you give one example, but I, I come back with, we have purchased a significant amount of land and created parks.
Right, and what doesn't show on this is that there's actually one point two million dollars in the land acquisition fund right now?
Correct.
Yeah. So, so you're not, it's not that you have four hundred thousand dollars a year, you're starting out right now with one point two million dollars and adding four hundred thousand dollars a year over the next four years.
Looking at these numbers, this is what, this is what I'm struggling with, is that, and I see the fund balance is growing, I can hear you saying that they're not going to be that way. And I know in the past, they haven't been that way. But it's hard to like, look at this and be like, why couldn't half of your quarter set go, and that would be one point three five million dollars, go to transit to help them hit that B? And if, and if that in this two thousand and five can help transit hit that B and you don't need it because you have this fund balance growing? And I'm like, hmm, that kind of makes sense, but.
There's opportunity lost, um, but it is, as long as we could go out and, 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 and do something.
So, I would be up for the option for transit, of looking at that potentially, two thousand and five tax, if we're going to free off it, to include maybe, if this is true, where there's like fund balance happening with option A and option A.
Be happy to do so. No, 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 no.
It's not like so random, like throwing, like something else, I, I didn't see these, I mean, I did see them, I briefly looked, but I wasn't.
I just wanted to point out with financial forecasts.
I know, it's like, yeah.
Well, I mean, but I mean, it's just like, because once we get out past three years again, it gets really fuzzy as to the accuracy of that. I think anytime we've done.
But all these others.
They're, they're the same way, every, all forecasts, once you get past three, we're taking the best shot as of today of what we think it's going to be. But that does not take into consideration any type of economic downturn, anything that may change it, and that can blow a forecast. So, I want to make sure that as we look at this, we're not looking at, that for sure means that on twenty twenty-seven, we're going to have that one point.
No, I know.
It, it, it could shift a bit, I just want to make sure that, that that's, that's known.
But you're asking us to make recommendations and decisions based upon forecasts. And we have to look at forecasts to help inform us. And we can't live in fear that your forecast isn't going to come true. It might actually be better, just like the sales tax was, it might be similar. So, if the first three to five years are pretty accurate, then that's what we're going to have to use to make choices on. We, we can't, we don't have a crystal ball either, right?
For sure, but I'm asking, what, what we're asking for is guidance. And so, it's like, it's a being part of exactly what you've been doing in this part of, we like housing option A, look at these areas to fund. We like facilities, look at this area to do it. It's the same thing here. We, you know, we see this part of our forecast, if that's what you want to look at, see if there's some transit that maybe we could use a little bit of two thousand and five because we have some parts in there, that's the guidance of where we're like, okay, now let us go back, let's work that. And then we bring you back an updated forecast based on that, that allows you to have even bigger, bigger opportunities to make more informed decisions.
So, in our discussion on the two thousand and five, if we were, if, if any of it was to be corrected, that would need to go to the voters, right?
Yes, when you agree up to two thousand and five.
So, because until twenty twenty-seven, it goes to Parks Open Space and Trails.
Oh, yeah.
Just does, okay?
Twenty twenty-six.
Twenty twenty-six.
So, it's not through twenty twenty-six. That's why I was like saying, like, the option C for transit for right now, but if we reoff it or changed it and we had more money for it.
So, what, what I just heard you say though, Jessica, is that on the transportation sheet over there, you were willing to have not only larger tax looked at two thousand and five, that's what I thought I heard you say, you said a quarter percent.
So, so it could, it could, doesn't mean it does happen, it's just as you're coming back, how is what, which you. So, what I said was, it, it, it's hard for me looking at these numbers to say like, oh, you should maintain this and transportation should go into deficit, right? We should try to like, even it out if you can, if that makes sense. If you have a nineteen million dollar fund balance happening over here. I know, I know, I, but that's what I'm saying. So, all I'm asking for is a realistic look. Put those things as best as you can. And then, yeah, if a quarter set can balance out your or I would be willing to add that into a two thousand and five, reoff that one. That's all I'm saying.
I support that, too.
Support, 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 support.
I, no, not, I don't, I don't support it yet, I would, I want to see more information. I'm, I have always, you know, I, I really see the value in, in the Parks and Rec and I've liked the ability to have land acquisition guaranteed when they need it and new.
Um, I would, I, I like the dedicated funding for that. I also think that it would have, uh, a lot of support from the community. And then, uh, what I would, you know, what future councils could do is, um, reallocate general fund, I mean, they don't have to, that doesn't necessarily always have to go to Parks and Rec. That can go to different things, almost like council determined every time you do the budget, so.
I think, I think what our support was for was for that conversation, that, um, investigation into the numbers more deeply to see if this is something that could work out. I don't think it was that, let's go there, it was let's get the more information. So, it's exactly what I'm asking for.
I don't mind getting more information, but I.
And like, redoing this spreadsheet potentially to fix that and why there's nineteen million dollars in fund balance.
So, if I understand you correctly, it's option B with a slight variation about.
No, I don't think so.
Well, option A is what we're doing as far as the, the people have, uh, they approve it.
With the approve, yeah, with the.
So, until we, until we do, until we go to voters, we will do that through twenty twenty-six. Option A, if I, correct?
What Jessica said was kind of, is to basically come back to us, figure out, give us the realistic, what you need for Parks and Rec and maintenance and everything. And is there a way to help transportation not be at the status quo and going into deficit? Then give us some options for how we might fund that.
But it's option A.
I, I support option A as well. And then, before twenty twenty-six, we can reassess even larger sets.
Yeah, yeah, larger sets.
So, option A for me.
But with, um, because for us, I can support more information about would it work to.
Yeah, like what are the numbers?
To go, yeah, to split it out after twenty twenty-six.
Okay.
Because that would be, that was what you used to inform the voters that this is why we're doing it. So, we could, we could possibly help this other area that's also a priority.
There's some different options in that one. Okay, so, to recap, we started off with the housing, just to recap all this. The app comes out with the opportunity reserve fund as a, as a funding option, as a funding back reason. And for twenty-three, twenty-four, then possibly consider valid issue in twenty-four for near-term, short-term financing facilities was to look at possibly two thousand and five debt service as a funding option. For streets, bridges and alleys, it was option B, which you have funding, obviously we just did the post. And then over here, you had, excuse me, and the storm arteries was option B. Uh, transportation, option B, um, option B C-ish, I mean, C.
No, I read option C.
It's option C, hopefully getting to option B, larger set.
And a lot of these actual patients and Parks and Multimodal was option A, which was the only option.
Coming back with the full information.
More information. Clear, so, Jose, I'll get back to you sometime about when this information will be kind of back to you with more, with, uh, more details, especially about how these different funds, the impacts of these funds. Or looking at that sort of as a snapshot, not so much as isolation. Because I think that's where we'll, you know, we'll see all these, a lot of moving parts. Thank you, Mike Fox, I think that was it. And anything else?
Good work, everyone.
Thank you. I know, I don't either, I was just actually asking, uh. Yeah.
Oh, my gosh.